Well, good evening. It is Thursday, February 25th, 2021. Time is 6:30 PM, and I would like to welcome everybody to a regular meeting of the Independent School District 191 Savage, Burnsville Eagan Savage School Board meeting. Thank you. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Director Hume, would you please lead us in that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First time of business is to approve tonight's agenda. We ask for a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
In a second, please.
Second.
Was that Director Connor?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Ms. Kenny, will you please call the roll?
Sorry about that. Alt.
Aye.
Chester.
Aye.
Connor.
Aye.
Hume.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Said.
Aye.
Werb.
Aye.
Very good. The motion was moved by Director Hume, seconded by Director Connor, and passed unanimously. Now we will move to the information section of tonight's meeting and begin with a report about the American Indian Education Programming. Speakers will be Amina Aftedal, Director of Curriculum, Instruction and Assessment, Rebecca Musso, American Indian Education Liaison, and Kelly Sunquist, Chair of the American Indian Parent Advisory. Amina, the microphone is.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Miller. My name is Stephanie White, Director of Student Support Services, and I am stepping in for my colleague, Amina Aftedal, this evening. It's my pleasure to introduce the informational presentation on the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. Tonight, we will have two presenters, and so I'll ask them to come forward. Rebecca Musso, and she is new to our district, and so I'm so pleased that she's here tonight to share with us the work that she's been doing on behalf of our students and families and to show the vision for the committee. And secondly, I'd like to welcome Kelly Sunquist. She is the Chairman of our Parent Advisory, and Kelly has been with the committee for several years and is just a rock star parent and will be also joining in the presentation. And so with that, I will hand it over to Rebecca. And Erin, I believe we're relying on you for the slides. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I'm just pulling out my notes. So I'm going to introduce myself in my native language, and then I'll allow my Parent Advisory Committee Chairperson to introduce herself, and then I'll continue on with the presentation. Good evening. How me takyapi, chantewasdeinapechuzapi. Dakota chaze, isstaziziwiya, where she chaze Rebecca Musso. Miniwakha oyankay hemataha, minishota edwati. Good evening, everyone. I shake everybody's hands, fist bumps. My name, my Indian name is Yellow Eyes Woman. I am Dakota. I am from the Spirit Lake Nation. I'm a tribally federally recognized enrolled member of the Spirit Lake Nation in North Dakota and currently living, obviously, in Minnesota. I will let Kelly introduce herself.
Anin, buju. Hello. My name is Kelly Sunquist, Otter Creek Anishinaabe, White Earth Nation, and I am Chairperson of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. Megwich. Thank you.
So before I get to the slides, I would like to do a quick land acknowledgement. So we are gathered here, respectively, on the unceded land of the Sistatin, Wapitun, Midewakutun, Tin Twinta, Dakota Oyate peoples of Minnesota. I believe that my tribal nation of Spirit Lake is a sister nation to all of those tribes. And I just ask that you join me in taking a moment to acknowledge those communities, their elders, both past and present and future generations. That's why we're all here, as educators for those future generations. And just acknowledging the past of those things that have happened, of those Indigenous peoples that continue to live here and are our neighbors. Thank you for that. So just getting, jumping into it to the first slide. I'm sorry, I lost it on my computer here. Oh, my goodness. I'm sorry. My. So the, what we're going to review on is just the program purpose and goals, the role of the Parent Advisory Committee activities, and outreach that we're going to be doing for this school year, or that we are doing, our funding sources and future plans. Next slide, please. So the Indian Education Program Purpose and Goals is the support, is to support the academic achievement of the Indigenous students that are in the Burnsville Eagan Savage School District. And by Indigenous, I just want to point out that I mean American Indian and Alaska Native students. That is how they're marked in enrollment. Also supporting their post-secondary preparation, ensuring relevant curriculum within the district, relevant to the needs and interests and cultural heritage of those students, provide positive reinforcement, intercultural awareness among staff, and supplement state and federal educational and co-curricular programs. What that means is that our goals are to increase completion and graduation rates of Indigenous students, emphasizing academic achievement, retention, and attendance, development of supportive services for staff, including in-service training and technical assistance, research projects, including innovative teaching approaches, which actually has recently been brought up to me, which is great. Just teachers wanting to reach out, or kind of not reach out, but expand their teaching approaches, and including Indigenous thought, which is awesome. Career counseling for Indigenous students, modification of curriculum, as I mentioned, ensuring that the curriculum is appropriate to the cultural heritage. And then supplemental instruction for language, literature, history, and culture. Next slide, please. So the Parent Advisory Committee is critical, obviously, to the achievement and success of American Indian students. It is obviously composed of parents of the Indigenous students that are eligible to be enrolled in American Indian education programs. What that means is enrolled in a federally or state-recognized or a linear, linear descent. It serves, the Parent Advisory Committee serves an advisory role, like it says in the name, to help ensure that students are receiving those culturally relevant and equitable educational opportunities and offers a valuable opportunity to strengthen community partnerships. And it really has, I believe, that we have a really good set of parents that I have been able to meet with so far. Next slide, please. Also, on the Parent Advisory Committee, they come from many different nations. Like Kelly said, she is from White Earth, and we have Lakota people from Standing Rock, South Dakota. From, I think there's one from East Coast area. And so there's just many different tribal peoples represented on the parent committee, which is awesome. Next slide. So a lot, when I first started, I've only been with the Indian Education Program in the district for about three months, a few months now. And so when I started, then the big project was getting the education benefits applications done, and so that allowed me time to meet parents and do one-on-one time with them and ensure that they get those applications done, obviously. The next big project that came up was right before Christmas, and I, which was another outreach event that helped kind of put some pieces and names together with students, and it was a Toys and Tacos event. Very successful. I believe we had about, I want to say 60 to 70 parents show up. Families, I should say, like students and families that came through. I, through years of networking, I had a friend, family friend of ours that donate, that works for the Toys for Tots Foundation and donated toys, and we ordered Indian tacos from the Powell Grounds in Minneapolis and did like a curbside pickup meal, meal day for them, and so that was really awesome. And I also recruited a few new students also in like the early ages, so that was awesome. In March coming up, we're going to be doing a picture installation at the high school. I'm actually really excited for this. I invite you, the board, to attend. We don't have a set date yet, I believe. And so whenever that date comes out, I'll make sure to, that all of you get an invitation to that. Like I said, it's at the high school, and a picture was donated that was done by an Indigenous artist from Minnesota. And I still have yet to see that picture too, so I'm just excited for all of that, for all of us to get together and have this happen. The next thing is the McGeezy Partnership, the McGeezy Communications. In Minneapolis, we, they have been partnering or attending our South of the River meetings, and so we have begun, entered into a partnership or collaboration, a formal agreement with them to help provide tutoring services, because that's been kind of number one request from parents in this time of online virtual learning. And so anyway, we can help figure out, get those students what they need. It's been, it's been good so far. And then some other more student-focused things is beginning a student leadership group. Where I would like to focus on identity with the high schoolers. And then in the middle school and areas, two high schoolers work on cultural teachings, rites of passage, and coming of age types of cultural identity, and I don't believe that was something that can be established this year yet. Hopefully, within the next year, we can have some of those types of things set up and established and doing some kind of bigger activities with the high schoolers and helping them understand who they are. It's, I believe, one thing that I've encountered is a lot of identity and not really understanding themselves as an Indigenous person living in an urban area. Next slide, please. Is that it? Next slide. So I believe this graph is pretty, pretty self-explanatory. 126, 150 is our total for the program. The majority of that comes from achievement and integration. 7% from the federal Title VI grant, and then also 34% from the state Indian Education Program.
Great. And I just want to jump in and just reinforce the, that the American Indian Education Program is being funded outside of district funds and that it is a great opportunity for us to include that as part of our cultural outreach and part of our equity plans.
Thank you, Amina. So, future plans. One thing that has come up that we're looking into getting going this year soon is book readings, storytelling. The Shakopee community and a person that works for the community that's on our parent committee has recommended an Indigenous author from South Dakota and who's recently written a children's book and is doing live readings, virtual live readings. And so we're thinking we're kind of do a family night style virtual live reading of this book, and we're going to order this book. And so we're trying to get the ball rolling on that. Storytelling, so I'm doing outreach on the lookout for Minnesota Native elders or just storytellers in general, people that are language storytellers. I also hope to resume the Drum and Dance Program. Obviously, with COVID, we can't really do things in person just yet, so hopefully we can get that going again. I know that a lot of the community, especially a lot of the outside, outside of the school district, really anticipated that. Just having, you know, a chance to come and come together. I know that personally, those types of gatherings can be really refreshing for people. And so even if you're not Indigenous, I know that it is just to, you know, get together and talk about things other than outside of ourselves through drum and dance, and also it's educational, teaching kids how do you dance jingle or whatever cultural dance is relevant to them. As I mentioned before, we're talking, I am having meetings with the South of the River Collaborative Group. We are really just waiting it out to see what COVID is going to allow as far as the powwow goes. Obviously, 191 is the host venue for the powwow, and so I might be coming to you in the near future, seeing what we can and can't do as far as hosting something like that, but I'm going to leave that up to my parent committee, because they might want to do, just do something virtual and not have an in-person celebration, but that's going, obviously, going to come from the parent committee. I had meant, we are anticipating Indigenous presenters surrounding Native American Heritage Month, which is in November. Also, Rock Your Max is in November. I believe it's November 15th. A conversation or something that has just kind of been brought to my attention is Sioux Trail. And so that, that's why on the slide, it's a number five, it says building name change. I have to do a little bit more research and digging on that part, and so, but I know that it is something that has been kind of brought to my attention. And I hope that land acknowledgements can start happening. Some of the other administration people in the high school building have also brought to my attention, doing a set land acknowledgement inside the building with maps or just having some sort of statement installation about the land that the buildings are on. And so that's just something to bring to your attention also, and things that I have on my mind as the cultural liaison. I will open it up to questions or comments. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Board members, do we have anybody who would like to? Any comments or ask any questions? It's time. Indicate by raising your hand in the Zoom session, please. Director Alt.
Well, first, thank you very much for this report, Rebecca. I always appreciate receiving this before the vote of concurrence, because I know that, you know, a few years back, we did have a vote of non-concurrence, and we do appreciate that the district is doing better with our Indigenous families, so that that, they feel confident in giving us that vote of concurrence. I think what really speaks to me in this report is, you know, obviously, it's so important to celebrate the identity of our Indigenous families and students and to really lift, lift that cult, that heritage up. And that's really the, you know, the primary purpose is for our students and our families. Secondary to that, I think there's benefit to all of our students to, to understand the history that many may have already been aware of, but others have not been aware of, and I think really understanding, you know, doing what we can with our curriculum and, and the celebrations to make sure that, that we're all learning together. But again, that's, you know, the, the primary focus is our Indigenous families, so appreciate having you here. So happy to have you here. I did just have one question. The building name change, was that coming out of the advisory committee, the suggestion?
No, it was with a staff member that had just kind of brought it to my attention, that that was something that had come up before the building had closed. It's my understanding the building is closed now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it's not, yeah, it's, it's the Child Care Center at this.
Okay.
For the district.
Yeah. And so it's something that I, Kelly and I have talked about, but we anticipate just having just a discussion initially about it at our next parent meeting.
Thank you.
That's where we're at with that now. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other board members wish to speak? All right. Well, I would just like to echo the thanks for taking the time to, in your evening, to come here and present. Appreciate the time you spent and appreciate the informative discussion. Look forward to working more in your, with all of you and especially those of you in the new, new in this role. Thank you. All right. We will next move in our information, stay in our information section. We're going to move to a report about the fiscal year 2022 initial budget adjustments. Presenting will be Dr. Battle Superintendent and Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services. Dr. Battle, are you going to take it out?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Miller. Thank you, Board of Directors, and I too want to thank Kelly Sunquist and Rebecca Musso for your presentation. So tonight, Lisa Ryder and I will share updated fiscal year 22 budget development information. So this is what we're going to go through tonight. So I will ask Erin to pull up the presentation, please. And we're going to start talking about where we are right now and how we got there, our starting point for next year's budget. We'll look at the current reality and identify the issue we need to address for fiscal year 22 budget. We'll also review the strategies for building this budget based on the board guidance from the February 11th workshop as a part of our initial proposal, and then we'll review what's next, both short term and long term. In the next slide, you will see a couple of familiar document names, guiding change and the fiscal year budget goals, process, and timeline. I'm not going to go through them tonight, but here are two of the documents that we have reviewed in the past that guide our work. On the guiding change outlines in more detail our current situation, the outcomes we hope to achieve in building this budget, and the things that are not acceptable for us to do. Next slide, please. Just to simplify what's in the guiding change document, we will continue what we started last year, taking a priorities and values-based approach to the budget. That means we'll be strategic in our approach. We'll fund our priorities first. And some of you may have been familiar with another option for developing a budget when you have to make any reductions, and that is to just cut a certain percentage across the board in all of our areas. However, a priorities-based approach really looks at our strategic plan and how the board has prioritized what we value in this, in this district. And as you are all well aware, we are implementing this process in the context of a pandemic. And so you'll see as we go through the outcome we want, which is really focused on providing stability for our students, minimizing loss of service, support, and programming, which is so essential this year more than ever before. And so with that, with the next slide, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of our Business Services.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. So Dr. Battle spoke of the big picture items, and we're going to start now talking about the approach of projecting our budget and building our budget for next year. I'm going to get into some of the specifics that let us start planning. So for the budget, that means going through some of the assumptions that we're more making about revenue and spending for fiscal year 22. The major assumptions are around revenue, of course. Most of that is based upon our enrollment. So we have to project how many students we expect to have next year. We're starting with the assumption that the state aid will remain flat per pupil. That will be, and that will be receiving some additional federal funding as the pandemic relief money is available to us. We also are assuming that there will be a less compensatory funding. The compensatory funding is based on the number of students that we had enrolled in this past fall and those that were eligible for free or reduced meal, priced meals. As a reminder, not only us, but many of the school districts around have had fewer families apply for those benefits due to the circumstances of either being in virtual academies or, or just not taking advantage of that this past fall. Next slide, please. On the spending side, we've built in assumptions about salaries and benefits. Of course, the vast majority of our spending is on people, and we make. And we make some assumptions about the cost of different services, including transportation and utilities. Some of these, we know what to expect very closely because we have contracts that are in place. Or we have a specific plan like our long-term facilities, maintenance projects. Or we have control over them, as is the case for supplies and materials. Next slide, please. The last set of assumptions that we're building in to our starting point for looking at next year's budget are assumptions about what we're going to not need to spend this year. As you know, the board approved a revised budget recently. These items that you see on the slide are additional reductions in spending during the current fiscal year that I do anticipate that we could in the future, adjust our budget. So because we don't expect to have to move the best program this year, you see that that's listed here as a spending savings that we would not be utilizing the $400,000 that is currently in the budget for that moving and retrofit of best. Because of the time that we've spent in distance learning and for other reasons, we're also expecting that we're spending less on substitutes than what we had originally budgeted. Because of the time that we've also spent in distance learning, we find that there are other areas of our budget that are lesser in spending than what we had planned on budgeting. An example of that might be our travel expense. Or you can also take a look at our supply budgets and find that typically when we're in person and everyone is looking for paper or various different supplies and things of that nature, those purchases are being made. And when we're distance learning, they're not as readily made. And so those savings are existing for the current year and identified here as potential savings for the school year. This all adds up to $1.5 million in reduction of spending. And this will then result in a larger fund balance as we begin the next school year, which is fiscal year 22. But instead of being surprised by this information at the time of the audit or just you know, seeing those numbers at that point in time, you would consider a revision or an amendment to our current revised budget that could allow us then to show that reduced expenditures and a higher fund balance projected that would then start our fiscal year 22 budget off with that higher number. We'll know better what assets we have to work with as we get a little further down and have gone through our process of working with our ESR funds and really kind of seeing what it, what's needed as we bring our students back in person here, both at the elementary level as we have. And as we begin to consider that for our hybrid in our, in our secondary schools. Next slide, please. All of these assumptions, the revenue, the expenditures and the potential savings we may still continue to have this year, those all come to to, as a part of our starting point. And before we get, begin considering those, you see that in January, we prepared for you a comparative summary of our general fund budget and what we considered our current reality at that time. That shows an ending fund balance of 19.79 million at the end of this current year. As you look at the next slide, please. The, the number you see at the top for our initial projected fund balance for FY22 is now different. The difference between what you just saw on the previous slide and this number is 1.5 million. The savings that we just spoke about that could potentially happen yet this year. So assuming that amendment to the current revised budget is made, you would then see an initial projected fund balance that would be higher as starting point as we begin to talk about then FY22. So now I'd like to kind of note that the fund balance that you do see listed here, that is the total fund balance. So that includes not just our committed and our restricted fund balances, but also then our unassigned. We typically focus on the unassigned fund balance and the unassigned fund balance is much lower than the numbers you see here. The reason why we focus on that is because it is the unassigned fund balance that is truly what is our cash flow that we have to work with. And that is what the policy that the board has is built around is the unassigned fund balance. But I really want to point out about this slide is what you might call the problem that we need to address. You can see that with all of the assumptions in place, we expect about $122 million in revenues and $133 million in expenditures. That leaves us with a deficit of about 10.86 million. And as we go into the next section of this presentation, that deficit is what we will be addressing with our budget strategies. You'll see that number come up again later. So let's go to the next slide, please. At this point, there's the opportunity for us to take a look at the interactive model. And so I will attempt to share the screen that I have. And so you should now be seeing a screen with some pink and yellow on it along with numbers, right? Okay. So this is the current slide then that is reflective of that, you remember that 10.86 million? Okay. So this is our starting point. This is where we are beginning prior to us using these strategies. It does include the adjustment that we discussed about our current year adjustments here with $1.5 million being identified as potential additional savings in the current year. It does not, however, reflect any of the other budget strategies that we will begin to talk about. So I wanted to give you kind of a before picture of what that looks like. And so as you can see, here's that beginning part of 21.29 mil. Our revenues, our expenditures, the net difference and the anticipated projected fund balance, then total fund balance, including all of these. That would be for projection of next year. And you can see that that is only at a 2.5% unassigned fund balance. Okay, that's well below that, which is the board's policy. So I'm gonna, let's go back to the slides now and there we go. And as we start on the the next slide, with this as our starting point, then let's get into our initial proposal. As you've heard Dr. Battle share at the beginning, our strategies for building the budget revolve around the goal of protecting our programming, our staffing and services so that we can provide the stability to our students. Our strategies for doing that while also maintaining a 6% unassigned fund balance goal of the board is prioritizing the investments that we're making in our pre-K-12 pathways model, including programming and services. We want to also maximize our use of our federal pandemic relief funds, our restricted fund balances and also our unassigned fund balance. Basically making the best, the greatest possible use of the funds that we have that are available to us. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Battle now to talk a little bit more in depth about the first strategy.
Yes. So I'd like to spend a few minutes discussing the priority investments in our pathways pre-K-12. This basically affirms our priority is to continue down the path we've created when it comes to instruction program and services for our students. And so when we talk about building, providing stability for our students as we move through and come out of this pandemic, this is what we are talking about. So we want to continue the pathways model so that our students can have a articulated alignment pre-K all the way to graduation. So we're going to continue to invest in our early learning at specifically having a voluntary pre-K at each elementary. Just want to remind everyone that it, that is contingent on legislative action. And we have submitted our application, which was due in February, early February. We will continue to focus on meeting the personalized needs of our students. We want to maintain class sizes and we will continue to pursue our equity work toward becoming a culturally proficient school system. And we absolutely want to continue and support in the mental health areas for our students and their overall wellness. And with that, I'll turn it back to Lisa Ryder.
So as we talk about our pandemic relief funds, this is an area where we want to be sure to maximize the use of these funds. There are additional costs that we know we're experiencing with regard to our transportation and operations, particularly as we have fewer students on our buses due to the need to, to socially distant, social distance and to be safer with regard to the number of individuals in one small space. So as you take a look at our, our options for maximizing these federal dollars, we have to the extent possible the use of our CARES-1 funds in FY21. So as you may recall, we've had a lot of different acronyms that have been thrown out around the pandemic relief funds. And so CARES-1 and CARES-2 is what kind of is now in play. The coronavirus relief funds, the CRF funds, those were all kind of done and over with at the end of December. Okay, they do impact our budget, but they are no longer available to us anymore. We've used them. So what we have yet to work with are our CARES-1 funds that are available to us through this year. They can be used into the next year and and if necessary, even into, up through September of 22. Now, our CARES-2 funds are yet to come to us in official format because that has to be approved by legislative action. And so as that does become available to us, the thought is that that would be around mid-March, that we would learn all of the information that we would need in order to be able to, A, receive the funds and then budget for them and, and explain how we would plan to use them. The CARES-2 funds are very similar in nature to the CARES-1 funds as to how they may be used. And they will be available to us all the way through September of 2023. So here again, it's a matter of what is necessary for us to use within the current fiscal year and what is necessary to use in next fiscal year? And as, as needed beyond. Let's go to the next slide, please. So next, as part of our proposal, the board would be taking some procedural actions that will help to protect our unassigned fund balance. So this involves following our current fund balance policy 714 and committing and assigning some of our federal and state aid that we receive this year to address the student needs in, in the future, in the future. We know the effects of the pandemic are not going to go away when the calendar switches to July 1. It makes sense to continue to use these funds to address those needs next year. So procedurally, if the board accepts and moves forward with what we're proposing, we'd like to take action, the board would take action to commit and to assign funds in June before officially adopting the new budget. What would happen there is the board would make a decision as to what would be committed and assigned. And that calculation would be identified and it would be conducted as we finish the audit for the current fiscal year. But you would take action on this prior to adopting next year's budget in June. You take the action every year to commit funds. What we haven't utilized in the past is the assignment of funds. Taking these steps to allow us to protect the unassigned fund balance without sacrificing our instructional and service priorities for our students. Next slide, please. So here's what that looks like. When you think back to our starting point, that 10.86 million, I had said that the challenge that we need to address is that projected deficit for next year, 10.86 million. When we right-size for our enrollment, we reduce our spending by $1 million. We then can cover the 5.96 million of the deficit with the fund balances that the board has committed and assigned. So you're essentially planning to use and planning to spend down that fund balance next year to the tune of 5.96 million. The number of 5.96 looks a little different than the number you see at the bottom of the slide of 4.46 because that's what we talked about as far as being additional needs for reductions. The difference between that is that 1.5 million, the 1.5 we talked about for the savings for the current year. So that's why it's a little different. So as we take a look then at the use of the federal resources, that 3.9 million, this is the anticipation that we would utilize a net amount of $3.9 million of our federal funds would be used for existing needs that we have, not new items necessary, but existing needs. For example, if an extra bus is needed in order to accommodate students because of the pandemic, that's an added cost. But then the amount of dollars that we would be using not for added costs, but for our existing needs, that is the 3.9 million. Does that make sense? So we would utilize more federal funds than the 3.9, but the portion that is for the use of our current needs is 3.9. And the other amount of dollars would be anticipated for added needed costs, added masks or cleaning supplies, things that are above and beyond what is typical. So as I mentioned again, that difference between that 4.46 and the 5.96 that you see there for fund balances is that 1.5 million for the current year spending that is expected this year and would be reflected in an amended revised budget. Moving forward then with a higher beginning balance for the next year. So as we now go to the next slide, I'm going to again, share my screen, which will allow for us then to take a look at that interactive model. But this time, we're going to take a look at it from, with these proposed strategies in play. So you can see the impact there and what that then looks like. So you should be seeing a slide now that is again, those numbers with pink and yellow. But in the pink, there are now, this cell, for example, has a 5.4 million, right? Yes, okay. So as you take a look at this, then, let's just back up for a moment and walk this through. So as we said, in the current year, you're going to see the 1.5 million right here. And that's what we're anticipating would increase our fund balance at the end of this year. And we would plan and project for that in an amended revised budget for the current year. And we would start our, our budget plan for the next year then with that number. The million dollars of savings for right sizing you see here in the adjustment for right size of staff. And the use of fund balance that you're seeing is reflected in this area right here of that 5.968 million. And so this is where you're gonna, you can see you're spending more than what you're bringing in for revenue. It results in a net variance that then is where you are planning to spend down that fund balance. The use of the federal funds, we have separated so you can see it more clearly in the pink area. So for example, we would potentially use $5.4 million of which we would increase expenditures by 1.5 million with the intention then of the difference that 3.9 would be utilized to address our existing expenditures that are included in this line item. Okay. So hopefully that kind of helps to see how it's all laid out and what that impact is. So that committed and assigned fund balance then shows up in the current year's ending numbers. And these are not the numbers that you see when we revise the budget that were, that were used or assumed. With the commitment and the assignment being utilized by our board in, in the strategies, that would allow for these funds to be set aside here for purposes of moving forward and then essentially you're using those funds right there. Okay. So whatever you can commit and set aside for the dollars there then is essentially used to cover those costs here. So then in the coming year, you would project that that would then be used up because fund balance is only a one-time available use, right? With these numbers in play as we've described, what this allows is for an expected unassigned fund balance, that line here, that calculates out just above 6%. So I'm going to now switch back over to the slideshow and stop sharing. So let's talk about our next steps. So with everything having been said thus far, let's review that process. Our general timeline, tonight, we present the initial proposal. We will look for guidance from the board and, and we're continuing to receive input. We will look for guidance from the board and, and we're continuing to receive input from our staff and our public. The goal is to present a recommended budget at the March 11th meeting that reflects that input and board direction. The board officially adopts the budget in June. And as I mentioned during the presentation, there are a couple of procedural actions that will take place prior to that proposal being approved. We would need to approve an amended revised budget to reflect that savings that we discussed of 1.5 million dollars in expected spending reductions for the current fiscal year. And that can happen later this spring. It can happen in May or possibly even April. We would need to approve also an exemption. And which is, this is typically done by the board that by approving the adopted budget, if we're projecting the fund balance to be less than 8%, you're essentially waiving that fund balance policy that is currently set to be at 8%. That fund balance policy is policy number 714. And we would need the board to officially commit and assign those funds for use in the fiscal year 22. So that's, that's actually an action item separate from the approval of the budget that the board does take. And it's usually right before the approval of the budget. Both of those can happen in that meeting in June as you are adopting the next year's budget. Next slide, please. We are still taking input from staff and families. And as we have said previously, we're asking about their priorities and their ideas about efficiencies. And as of February 22nd, we have received eight responses. There's not enough responses with that actually to make any statistical claims. But anecdotally, we know that they reflect support for the district's pathway model and the student support services. And with that, I will turn this back over to Dr. Battle for the next slide.
Thank you. So lastly, I'd like to share of our next steps for a systemic review of our budget. And so the pandemic has really made us look at what we do with a new perspective. And we feel strongly that this is an opportunity to go deeper and to evaluate what we're doing, how we evaluate our services, how we structure our programming, and see how we can do better. And so over the next six to eight months, we'll be reviewing those systems and comparing to our peers to look for where we can be more efficient. The examples shown here are just that examples. I don't know what we might change, but we need to be comprehensive and thorough. Everything should be on the table if we want to do what is best for our students. And with that, that's the last slide. I'd like to thank you for your time and we're open for questions. Chair Miller and directors.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Battle and Lisa Ryder for that presentation. I will open it up again, directors, board members, if you wish to ask question, clarify something, please use the raise hand function in Zoom. Director Hume has his hand raised. Go ahead.
More of a comment, but I think this is encouraging. It's not necessarily what I was expecting a month or two months ago when we were, when I was starting to think about what this year's budget process would look like. I think given the state of the world right now, I think if there was ever a year for us to use procedural votes or however Lisa phrased it, procedural processes in order to save the district some pain, I'm supportive of continuing that conversation. I think this is a good year to do that. There's been so much that so all of our families and staff have already had to go through to cut even more to the bone, I think would be challenging this year. So I'm encouraged by this. I look forward to continuing the discussion. I did have one question, I guess. I think I know the answer, but I'm just going to throw it out there. When you refer to right sizing for enrollment, I assume that largely means teachers, but what my, my question is, are there other possible reductions that could come about as a result of right sizing for enrollment? Or maybe it's too early to say, but.
Right. So as we begin the process of actually identifying class sizes at various sites and schools and grade levels, that's where you begin to better understand exactly whether that dollar amount is going to be reflected of teachers or potentially EAs or other, other support services that we may have in play at a particular site. So as we take a look at this, at this point, it's not definitive as to exactly which area of employees that we may be talking about that will come through as we begin our work here in March and April. However, at this point in time, we do, we come up with that figure utilizing some assumptions with regard to what is the average cost and taking a look at the change in enrollment and what does that change in enrollment then typically require with regard to staffing or result in, I guess, I should say with regard to staffing calculations. Our ratios for class sizes are not shifting. That's staying static with this proposal. What changes is the, the other factors, the total count of enrollment and then therefore the count that's necessary for staffing.
And if memory serves, we made an adjustment to class size ratios last year as part of the budget process.
Correct.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Director Connor, put your hand raised.
Yes, and that brought up another question, him talking about the ratio of class sizes. What is that now currently?
The ratio is at varying levels for each grade. Let me just pull this up quick.
Oh, well, you know what? I probably can look that up then because if it's, you know, I thought maybe it went by, you know, elementary, junior high and high school.
It does. Those ratios.
Yep. So the elementary ratio this past for building this year's budget is 25.5. And that's what we will continue to use at the elementary level. Our middle level is at 36 and our senior high level is at 39.
Whoa.
Those, those are the factors used when calculating the staffing ratios. It's not necessarily what every class is. It's just that's the, the averages used.
Okay, thank you. And my other question was, were there any cost savings for building maintenance this year? Because, you know, since we had so little of it because students weren't in school.
Right. Yes, I think that we will see some of those savings come through. And that's where that 1.5 million is an estimate at this point in time. And as we amend the revised budget, that we would try to get that a little tighter and closer to figuring exactly how much savings there may be. We have seen savings in the areas of utilities. There are also some things though, that when we didn't have students in school that we were working on for repairs and maintenance, for example, that we might otherwise have done in the summer. But because students were not in the buildings, we took advantage of that and got some of that work done too.
Thank you.
Okay. And before we move on, I'd just like to make a quick comment on classroom size because I know this is a discussion that will come up more and we have probably folks listening into it. Just to be clear, the number we, that was given is a representative average. And you will see various classroom sizes at the district at, but most of, the majority of the classrooms hover somewhere in that vicinity. Director Alt, your hand raised.
So I, just a couple of questions. I know that we're planning, that you're planning a workshop. Is the plan then during the workshop to present the adjustments for the right sizing to enrollment by business units? So we can see how the staffing is, is rolling out across the different business units?
The ability to do that typically comes when we pull everything together, which happens more mid to late May. So if we're talking about our workshops in March, I think it would be more around, we could, we could discuss what staffing assumptions are, but it wouldn't necessarily, you know, we can look into that, I guess, the, the budget unit piece is what I'm a little concerned about. I think I hear you asking, can we see the staffing by budget unit? And its impact for the right sizing in March? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, I, I think I'd have to, I know we can get to the identification of like what we're looking at for those class sizes. Keep in mind, those ratios that I mentioned, those are only classroom teachers only. So it doesn't include, those ratios are not used for the support services that we see for special education or for EL or for, you know, student needs that there might be adds this other need. So the point being that those are layered on top. And so that's where the use of our federal funds and how we can you help, use those to help offset some of this is, is what we're looking to do outside of the, the classroom adjustments. So essentially what you're going to see is those are going to be in the classroom adjustments. And it's just depending on how much level. So I, as I, as I talk myself through it, it's, it's really going to end up being in your elementary, middle school and your high school core classrooms, that those adjustments are going to be reflected, whether it's in teachers or educational assistants or others that are supporting, it'll be in those three budget units is my point.
So, and, and forgive me, I just wanna, I, I, we have an opportunity here to help shape what that, what that information will look like when it comes to us in workshop. So theoretically, there could be, understanding the, how the, you know, the budget unit plays itself out. We could see, for example, elementary teacher FTEs being adjusted at X number. We could see elementary EA is being adjusted at Y number, right?
Yes, the, the work that is done through our HR Director of HR and all of our principals and department leads during the month of March and April is to really fine tune exactly who's in what positions. So if you're talking overall counts, yes. If we're talking about like who's where, that won't be finalized in March yet.
Okay. And I guess the final, the final question and concern is, and I've kind of, you know, I've, I, I respect the guidance and the expertise, Dr. Battle, that you and your team bring. As our enrollment continues to decline and we cut teachers and EAs and we remain top-heavy, I have concerns about that. I think that we need to, whether it's with this budget or with that, you know, that review that you're doing in the fall to find efficiencies, you know, maintaining administration and the upper level at the expense of teachers and EAs when enrollment is declining is something that we really need to take a good hard look at. Because right now, I personally speaking for myself, would hope to see some kind of adjustment because, you know, we've got great teachers. We have great principals. We have great leadership. And in terms of talking about equity, as far as our adjustments, we need to, we need to make sure that we're being mindful about that. So whatever, you know, Teresa, I, I know that, you know, in years past, we have received, we have been able to see what the impact of these adjustments are on FTE, saying that, you know, we're not going to be able to see that until April or May. It, I don't understand why that would be true for this year as opposed to years past.
Let me clarify. It's not that the FTE is not available. If you are asking for a list of names, that will not be available.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm not looking for a list of names. No, no, no. Just the buckets.
Yep, got it.
A direct fraud. Thank you for your comments. And so as you shared, that's one of the reasons why we're not bringing forward an increase in class size because we do recognize last year that we had reductions in our, our teachers that were heavy. And so we'll look at our administration and define that for the board, what's in that category. Because it, it varies. As you said, it does include the school principals. And so thank you for your comments.
And I just wanted to put that out there so that, you know, the officers can work with you and, you know, what that document might look like for us in workshop because I don't want to just see percentages. And that was my only, that's my last question. Thank you.
Any additional questions or observations at this point? All right, seeing none, we will wrap up this.
So Chair Miller, can I get clarification? So at the workshop, the board did ask to go to the fund balance at 6%. So this evening you seen that impact. So just wanted to ensure that we're moving forward with that and then we'll bring forward that board action.
Yeah, I have not seen any change or had any indication from what our previous conversation on direction was. I anticipate that when we have further clarity on the, the exacts of the anticipated reductions, we'll have, we'll be able to discuss those in our workshops. I did share with you and Lisa Ryder, the form that I wish to see those in, in our workshops. So I think that should probably settle the conversation, previous conversation we had, so. So, okay. We'll move on then to the next part of tonight's meeting. And that is to receive an update about District 191's efforts to implement COVID-19 related educational and public health guidance issued by the NDE and the MDH respectively. Speaking will be Dr. Battle.
Chair, Chair Miller, Directors of the Board, if I may, I'd like to share some comments before my regular COVID-19 report. So this week, February 22nd through 26th is Minnesota School Board Recognition Week. And so in your role, yes, you serve as an essential voice for our community in their schools. And you provide that local oversight for our most important public service. And you ensure the community's values and needs are reflected in our work and in the schools. As school members, you selflessly devote your knowledge, your talents and a significant amount of time to your roles as advocates for students and families and ambassadors to the communities we serve. Our students truly benefit daily from your hard work and dedication. And so on behalf of myself, staff, students and the entire 191 community, thank you for your tireless service as members of the District 191 Board of Education. Thank you. And with that, I'll move on to our COVID-19 Board Report. This evening presenting with me will be Bernadette Bean, our lead school nurse. And then Lisa Ryder will join us at the end of our slide presentation. So tonight, we're going to share information related to health and safety, academics, activities and operations. And first, we will begin with the confirmed cases from Dakota and Scott County. This represents a two-week period from January 31st through February 13th. Dakota County released the day is at 25.2, which is a decrease from 29.46 from the last two weeks. And Scott County is 27.13, which is an increase from 25.60. Per the previous recommended policy options in the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan, secondary would be in the hybrid learning model. However, as you know, Governor Walz made an announcement on Wednesday, February 17th that prompted an update to Minnesota Safe Learning Plan. That based on CDC guidance, if a school is currently in an in-person or hybrid model, the county-level data does alone does not impact the need to transition to a more restrictive model. Instead, schools should rely on school-level COVID-19 transmission data and staff capacities when making and staff capacities when making the decision to transfer between learning models. Also, starting on February 22nd, every middle and high school across the state had the option to choose to operate a hybrid or an in-person learning model if they were able to implement health and safety measures. Also, Governor Walz announced that starting on February 22nd, a rolling start or staggered start, which we implemented in September, is no longer required for any schools, elementary, middle or high school to safely transition to an in-person or hybrid learning model. So schools may choose to remove the rolling start portion of their plan and implement a hybrid or in-person learning model for all grades at the same time. Um, in the upcoming slide presentation, um, I will share a few other changes. But at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Bernie Bean, who can share analysis of the county data um, and share an update on our 191 data and any updates on mitigation strategies. Bernie?
Thank you, Dr. Battle, and good evening, Board of Directors. Um, so like Dr. Battle said, I'm going to give you a little bit more information on our local counties' data and a little bit on what we are seeing in our district at this time. The positivity rate for Scott County has increased just a little bit from 4.1 to 4.6. And Dakota County has actually decreased from 4.1 to 3.9. A couple, um, specific things for Dakota County. Their average seven-day rate of positive reports has increased from 74 last week to 78. So they're staying pretty stable. And one of the, um, really exciting pieces of data from, from Dakota County is that in the last 10 days, they have had no positive cases in our learned long-term care facilities in Dakota County. And they really feel that that's a testimony to the vaccination that has happened because that was the first targeted group. And so that's, um, really exciting news for us. Internally, since we went to in-person for elementary school, so February 1st to today, we have had zero case investigations for positive staff members. And we have had one positive non-staff member case investigation. We have to remember that we are in-person now. And when I look back at our data, um, and the health offices are keeping lots of numbers for us on what our trends are, what our, what our rates are, what our case investigations are. The first, um, case tracing that we did on the elementary level in the fall, that seems like a long time ago, was actually September 20th. At that time, Scott County's 14-day rate was 20.66 and Dakota County was 22.11. And now I am not a statistician and I am, this is not research. This is my interpretation of what these numbers are telling us. In September, we were hybrid, had less children. Now we are in-person, more children. Our numbers are higher as far as our county data than they were in September, but our positive cases within our building are less. So to me, that is saying what we're doing is working. Our priority on health and safety is impacting the positive disease and transmission in our community. And, um, that's kudos to the work from families to partner with us, the work from our staff, the work from our students, that we are really succeeding in keeping a safe environment. Now, I'm not, um, we still are in a pandemic and we will still see COVID. But what we're doing is working well. Our mitigation strategies of face shields, we just got our new shipment last week. And what I'm hearing from staff, um, I'm still wearing my old one. What I'm hearing from staff is the big difference is they've allowed some air holes on the foam and that has helped with the fogging. It has helped with a little air exchange. So they have been a great addition to our face shields. As far as saliva screening, our drool teams are set and ready to go for them, um, to offer their first screening in the middle schools on Monday. Um, they're trained and, and set to provide that optional service to our staff members. Vaccines, lots have been happening with the vaccine world. As you know, or maybe don't know, last week with the storms in the south, that caused, um, no vaccine to come to our local counties. And so that put a little wrench in the rollout. But this week, those, their counties have been working full speed ahead and they are vaccinating, um, a lot. And actually, if I look at when we offered the first vaccines to our health services in our school district and health in school is a pretty broad definition. It's our health offices, it's our licensed health professionals, our PTs, our OTs, our speech, it's our drool teams. Um, it is our EAs and our staff that work with children and do personal care type services. This week and next week, those staff members should be completing their two-dose COVID series. If they're, if they participated in that, so we are moving ahead. Alina has been an amazing partner for us, um, to continue to offer that option for, for different, for staff members. Um, Johnson and Johnson just applied for an emergency use authorization for their one-dose vaccine. And the hope is that tomorrow they will get that stamp of approval and they will be able to start rolling that vaccine out also. Um, and that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. So moving on to academics. So our elementary students and staff have finished their trans, transition back to in-person learning as grades three through five will welcome back to school, um, this month. So pre-flight checklists have been completed for several weeks as we waited for our COVID cases, uh, to fall. And on Monday, uh, February 22nd, middle and high school teams began their transition days to convert our sites back to hybrid learning, which will begin on Monday, March 1st. So, um, for our hybrid students, um, in grade six to 12, they will begin school starting with A-Day students on Monday, March 1st and B-Day students on Thursday, March 4th. And we, uh, are continuing providing our virtual academy, so we still have our distance learning students also continuing. So hybrid learning for Burnsville Alternative High School looks a little different. And thanks to their smaller size, students in hybrid will be able to attend in person four days per week, starting March 1st. Moving on to activities, the advisory team continues to meet weekly to monitor COVID cases and set our dials for activities and athletics. As individual tracing occurs, we have had some need to adjust dials on an activity by activity basis. But thus far, COVID permits us to continue setting dials that permit both student participation and spectators. Food and nutrition services, um, with more students returning to in-person and hybrid learning, we need nutrition services staff to serve students at sites. Our largest use of meal pickup is at Nicolet and at Eagle Ridge. We surveyed families at pickup at Sioux Trail this Wednesday. And 32, uh, vehicles were at Sioux Trail, um, on Wednesday. And so our Nutrition Services Director Julie Cronin-Better spoke to every driver um, to see if they would be willing and had, uh, the ability to go to Nicolet or Eagle Ridge to pick up their meals. Um, so of, um, there were only seven who said no. Um, one, uh, family had homeschool children, one was, uh, in hybrid. One person had, uh, children in both in-person and hybrid. Um, two were in virtual academy, two children in virtual academy for one family and two were in-person at Ron. And so with the low numbers at Sioux Trail and the increase of the needs at the sites for in-person and hybrid, um, it takes a considerable amount of resources and effort to order and accept those deliveries and prepare the meals. And so, um, we are going to survey our families again. Um, but we are thinking that la, next Wednesday would be the last, uh, date for pickup at, uh, Sioux Trail. Um, we are going to communicate if we make that change to families and ask our social workers and cultural liaisons to work with families that need assistance to Nicolet and Eagle Ridge. We've seen a significant drop as the numbers for the 32 for Sioux Trail. If you remember early in the pandemic, we had, uh, significant, uh, across our district. There are many, uh, resources, uh, in the community that families are accessing too. And so for our VA families, they get a five-meal packet to last for five days. So I wanted to emphasize that. So we're going to, uh, reach out to our families and collect more data. Um, but at this point, it looks like the last pickup, correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, uh, would be the next Wednesday.
March 3rd.
March 3rd. Cause it's dwindling. And we need more support at the in-person. Excuse me. Erin, will you can move to the slide presentation, please? Okay, thank you, uh, for that, Erin. So, um, as I mentioned earlier, Governor Walz made a significant announcement that districts really had the option to go to in-person. And so as you know, we had announced we were going to hybrid for our middle and high school students. And, um, so we've had a few questions about why we cannot just go to in-person. So the next slide, I want to show you the update, uh, straight from the Minnesota, uh, learning plan. We still have to adhere to social distancing. And so, um, just mentioning again about that February 17th announcement. Uh, next slide, Erin, please. Um, the additional safe health and safety, we're continuing that community, uh, excuse me, our saliva testing. So as part of the additional mitigation strategies, the governor and Minnesota Department of Health and Minnesota Department of Education are asking staff to access the community saliva testing on the off weeks of our distant testing. Um, this is the part about the physical distancing guidelines. We have to maintain six feet of physical distance from one another during the school day whenever feasible. When six feet of distancing cannot be met, a minimum of three feet of physical distance between students must be maintained. So that's part of the work of the teams, uh, at the middle and high school. Next slide, Erin, please. Also, um, as part of going back to in-person, we are required to have daily documentation of lunch from seating to support the contact tracing in the event of an exposure. Also, and Bernie may need to come in if we have questions about this piece. Um, uh, previously, we use the county data as the starting point, but they want us to go more to local COVID-19 data. And so this is, uh, the, this addresses that local data. So it's the number of students and school staff who are absent or who are sent home with influenza or COVID-19-like illnesses reaches approximately 5% of the total number of students and staff in a school in just one week. Um, we were mandated to, uh, work with our regional support team if we were changing, uh, models. Now we just simply need to, we reach out to them if we reach that threshold. Um, schools are strongly encouraged to discuss whether transition to a more restrictive learning model is necessary. Uh, next slide. Um, the governor, Minnesota Department of Health and Minnesota Department of Education have asked us to strongly recommend to students and families, um, to receive a COVID-19 test every two weeks at one of those community, uh, uh, sites. And you can find locations for free COVID-19 testing on the Minnesota Department of Health website. And we will also be sharing this, uh, information out to our families. Um, any school that's implementing in-person or hybrid learning must offer the distance learning option. And so we are continuing, um, with that. We are getting some questions if that will continue in the fall. So as you know, we are, we're somewhat surprised by the three learning models, uh, that were announced for this fall. So just stay tuned, uh, we, we really don't know. Uh, we're trying to get through this spring and the end of the year and then, uh, launch our summer, uh, programming. Um, with the next slide, Lisa's going to cover some operational issues in addition to the food service that I shared earlier.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. The, uh, the state has now provided the face shields that we were awaiting. And so we're pleased to see that those are now received and available to our sites. Additionally, as our secondary bus routes have been completed and that communication was sent out on postcards this, this week, as well as now that information is loaded into ParentView as well so that, um, everyone can see that information within their ParentView account. And, um, if they, if they aren't accessing it in that manner, then those postcards should also be in their mail. So we're pleased about, um, the timing of all of this being available to our families so that they, they're prepared for next week as to which bus their students will be riding. That concludes my conversation. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Erin. That concludes the COVID-19 report. Um, a lot of big changes, uh, a lot of updated information connected to Governor Walz's announcement. Thank you, Chair and Directors.
Thank you. Do we have any, uh, desire for comments or questions? Director Alt?
Um, so a question, of course, I always have concerns about meals for our families. Um, so those families that were surveyed at Sioux Trail, there were 32 of them. Is that correct?
Yeah, so it's dropped significantly, yeah, 32.
So as part of, um, Julie Cronin-Better's survey of the families, was there an, um, an option to, uh, choose between going to Nicolet versus having meals delivered to their home? Did we get a response for both of those?
Yes, if I may. Um, so those, of those 32 that were present, um, Director Cronin-Better inquired of those as to whether they could attend Nicolet or Metcalf, or I'm sorry, Nicolet or Eagle Ridge. And if that wasn't possible, then there were seven basically that indicated that would be problematic. And so she further inquired as to what was the reasons for those. And so those are, are, those are items that we believe we can, we can address with a small number of families that that would be an issue for.
So, but, so delivery to their homes is, is really what we're looking at for those seven families?
Of the seven, um, some of them are actually in-person and some were hybrid and so it wouldn't be a constant and, um, some were uh, actually not, um, not part of our schools. And so that's where they would then possibly be, uh, looking for something of a delivery, yes.
Got it. So it was, it was a, a, a mixed group?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other, uh, questions, uh, Director Hume?
Just had a question to piggyback onto Director Alt's question about the meal deliveries. Um, so 32 is the number at Sioux Trail. What does the typical number of meals picked up at Eagle Ridge and Nicolet? Maybe I missed that, but curious as a comparison.
Yeah, those I think are running more around the 150 mark.
Okay, that's a pretty big difference, all right?
Right.
Okay, thanks. And then my comment is, I know it's only been a couple of weeks, but I think it's very encouraging that in our elementaries, by following all of the But I think it's very encouraging that in our elementaries by following all of the guidelines and protocols that, knock on wood. Things are good so far. So thank you to all of you on the call. And thank you to all of our teachers and our staff in the buildings for the tremendous work that is going in to keep. All of our students and staff safe while they are in the building five days a week. And I sincerely hope that that translates when my kids and many others return to hybrid next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, seeing none, I thank Dr. Battle for the report. Uh, we will now move to, um. The committee board appointment and school assignments report section of our evening. Uh, we'll start with any kind of committee or board appointment. Roles if you are assigned to a committee and have had a meeting, uh, since this assignment in January. Now it'd be an opportunity to give a, an overview, uh, typically reserved, who was chairing the committee, but. Anybody would like to go first?
I'll go first.
All right.
Okay. Some of the proposals, uh, for bills I will be highlighting from the AMSD meeting, Ross.
We're having a little bit of an internet delay with you, Director Connor.
Members with. No? Am I frozen? Okay. Well, AMSD.
Hear you now.
Oh, you couldn't hear me before?
We couldn't before, but we hear you now.
Okay. Okay, I was just wondering if the new members knew what the AMSD stood for, be since I had to learn that myself.
Right ahead, you can just.
Okay.
Lead in on it.
The first year, uh, first year teachers, this is one of the first proposals for the MSAD meeting. First-year teacher mentor program, uh, to help retain teachers in accordance with the Teachers of Color Initiative. Also. Uh, they propose a delay in implement, implementation. Of academic standards for one year due to COVID. Then students could, uh, sorry, then the teachers could focus on the students' needs. Such as not only their academic needs, but their emotional and social needs also. This would tie in with the summer program to hopefully get students up to par. Students, uh, that have a high absentee and low performance in school is what they're targeting. And they wanted Governor Walz to initiate, uh, to pass this bill immediately. I haven't heard since last week if he has or not, but I'm sure most likely he will. I shouldn't speak for the governor, but, um, safe schools revenue. Current safe school levy is to include juvenile justice issues. For, uh, traumatic students, students, students with special needs. Hardships from the pandemic and racial equity. Uh, this also includes a plus digital program. Which will include screen time for parents with preschool or kindergarten children. They can look at that way, they will be able to look in at their students at any given time of the day. And that's only proposed for preschool and kindergarten at this time. Few more issues. Proposals, I mean. Okay, they propose that peer professionals who work with students with disabilities be given paid time. Or time during the day to review student IEPs. And also annual pay orientation or professional development pay. Representative Yoakim indicated that this was her intent and that funding would be provided to cover the costs associated with this requirement. They said the bill was going to be referred to the House Education Finance Committee. Also, they would like to propose requirements for schools to have a seizure action plan. For students with seizure disorders and prescribed seizure medications. This bill was laid over to possible inclusion with the omnibus education bill. Um, Representative, uh, Yoakum also. Proposed that they would have extended time. Um, extended time revenue to all students at residential treatment facilities. Providing mental health and juvenile justice services also. The testimony was in support of this bill. And it, that it would provide, and, and this person Sandy Lewand, Will, Wielandowski. Would provide, she provided testimony to this bill. For, with examples of why the funding was necessary and testified to the critical importance of using. Of addressing this trauma and racial equity and mental health needs of our students. This bill was also laid over for possible inclusion in the ominous bill. Hopefully you've, um, received notice of the email about the driving equity in education.
Once again, I think you froze up there a bit.
Um, to discuss the materials and generate ideas and solutions. And then it went on to tell all the dates for every month and the time, and the cost is fifty dollars. There. Will be a digital, um, uh, proposal for digital well-being in regard to social media. So cyberbullying and responsible use of technology. The proposed legislation would be, would provide rather, a grant to a program called Live More, Screen Less. Which would create an online resource hub for parents, organizations, teachers. And provide training modules for digital. Uh, training modules for this digital well-being. And they're hoping to make this a statewide venture. No action.
Director Connor, we're having a hard time. You're kind of breaking up again.
Oh, well, that's, that was the end of my report. I'm sorry. I'm not sure why.
Well, you, we got the majority of it. Thank you for your diligence and, uh, and attending the meeting, yeah.
Sure.
Very helpful. Thank you. Uh, who would like to go next on a, any committee or, uh, board appointment roles?
I'll go. Um, Policy Review Committee. Uh, we met, um, this Monday, this past Monday, the twenty-second at five-thirty. And, uh, reviewed two policies that will be coming forward. As well as a regulation that will come forward, um, at our first meeting in March. As a informational report. And the committee meets next on Monday, March fifteenth at five-thirty. This concludes my report.
All right, very good. Um, I believe the Legislative Committee will be as a marker spot in, in later in the meetings. We'll move past that. And then, uh, the Negotiations Committee, is there anything to report on that?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay, any other board appointments to bring to the table? Well, school assignments, I know it's a little early and all that. Anybody made any reach outs or started those conversations? It's quite all right if you haven't. It's understandable. Okay, well, that'll end the, uh, committee board appointments, committee board appointments and school assignments section. And also ends the, uh, informational section of our meeting tonight. We will now move to the business meeting component of our school board meeting tonight, beginning with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. I'll ask at this time if there's any item on the consent agenda that a board member wishes to remove for separate consideration. Seeing none, I will now ask for a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor and a second.
Second.
So, um, seconded by Director Chester. Ms. Kenny, will you please call the roll?
Chester?
Hi.
Connor?
Hi.
Hume?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Said?
Hi.
Verb?
Hi.
Alt?
Hi.
Motion in front of us to approve the, tonight's consent agenda passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we will move to new business, beginning with, uh, our first item. A recommendation to accept resolution of concurrency for the Indian Education Education Goals Plan, Program Strategies and Activities. Speaking on this, uh, recommendation, Amina Offill, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Amina, welcome back.
Uh, Chair Miller, Superintendent, members of the board, I am presenting to you. Um, just as a follow-up to the fantastic presentation from Rebecca. Um, about the activities and the organization of the, um, American Indian Program. And, uh, Parent Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee did meet on, uh, February tenth. And, uh, had some very spirited discussions and, uh, very pleased to share with you their, uh, resolution of concurrency. Which did pass unanimously. Um, it's my recommendation that, uh, the school board, uh, approve and accept that, uh, resolution.
Excellent, thank you. I'll read the, uh, so we, tonight's recommendation. Uh, may I have a motion on tonight's recommendation that pursuant Minnesota State Statute, Section one twenty-four D dot seventy-eight subdivision two. Is recommended that ISD one ninety-one School Board accept the American Indian Parent Advisory Group Vote of Concurrent. Attesting that the school district are compliant with Minnesota statutes and meeting the needs of American Indian children. I'm looking for a motion for the recommendation in front of us.
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester, second.
Second.
Uh, seconded by, uh, Director Alt. Ms. Kenny, will you please call, or excuse me, I, first I will open it up for a discussion if there is any. Very well, seeing none, Ms. Kenny, will you please call the roll?
Connor?
Hi.
Hume?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Said?
Hi.
Verb?
Hi.
Alt?
Hi.
Chester?
Hi.
Very well, the recommendation in front of us passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will move to, uh, the next recommendation in our new business section. To approve the twenty-twenty-one legislative platform. Speaking on this recommendation, Leslie Chester, Vice Chair and of this board, and Erin Jinkleburg, Director of Communications. Director Chester.
Yes, thank you, Chair Miller. Um, on behalf of the Legislative Committee. Um, we are bringing forward our legislative platform recommendation for the board to approve tonight. Um, the command when the committee met, we are taking in consideration what the MSBA and AMSD has put forward in terms of their legislative. Um, platform agendas and then taking that to what it means and fits for our, our district and what's important to us. Um, in terms of, um, what we need for financially supporting our, our, um, district as well as for. Increasing our diversity amongst our teachers as well as, um, we're looking at, um. The sale of some of our buildings and needing to have exceptions. So. I will have Erin put footprint forward on screen what we are recommending the board approve tonight. And Erin, feel free to, to chime in too.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I don't necessarily have much to add on the actual, uh, content of the legislative platform. Uh, as you said, the, this was developed by the committee, um, taking into account. Some pieces of information from the AMSD and MSBA and other statewide organizations, but personalizing it for District one ninety-one. Uh, the other thing, uh, that I might add is just that, um, this will be, it is intended, um, based on what the committee would like. It's, it's intended to be something that our, uh, community members, staff members, um, key, uh, other leaders in the, in the community can use. To let their legislators know what's important to the school district and how. Uh, how they can work to help our local schools as well. So we will be distributing this, um, through, uh, placing it on the website. Pushing it out to staff via email and to, um, some key community leaders as well. Uh, and then I'll certainly work with, um, uh, Director Chester and, and Chair Miller, um, on distributing it to, directly to our state legislators as well.
And so we're proposing as part of our, um, platform for targeted areas. One is, we're asking for an increase of basic education funding by two percent per year. So two and two, even though as we were discussing earlier. That we are being very conservative as we're doing our budgeting, that we were anticipating zero, but we are going to be advocating for two and two. Um, we also want to reduce across subsidy for special education and English learning. Uh, cause that does impact our, um, general fund. Um, and then also three, provide targeted funding to increase diversity amongst our teachers. And then again, as I had mentioned, um, with looking at future sale of some of our properties that we have closed. Is provide a legislative exemption for our property sale. So on behalf of the Legislative Committee, we are bringing forward and having a recommendation that the board approve our legislative platform.
Excellent. I would ask for a motion for the, to approve the recommendation in front of us.
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume and seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Director Connor. I'll open it up for, uh, discussion and comments. Director Alt?
Well, first, I'd like to thank the Legislative Committee and, um, Erin. And your team for pulling this together. It's a, a lovely, um, it looks great. I think it'll sit well in the hands of our community and our legislators. Um, I do have, um, a motion to amend. And, um, just wanted to, I prepared a statement, um, just to help frame, um, my motion. And to provide some context for our work. Having looked back through our meeting materials, uh, in the new year, and this is specifically relating to item for the legislative exemption. Uh, in a new year, there has been no workshop or formal discussion in a regular board meeting. To define our parameters for the legislative exemption. Uh, the last discussion as a full board happened in November twenty twenty. So basically within item number four. Um, I interpret two separate conversations that need to take place. Uh, one is, um, you know, the main thrust of the legis, you know, the, the fact that this is the legislative platform. And the question is, do we as a board support the general tenets of what's being proposed? Uh, the second conversation, which I, uh, would suggest. Would be a separate conversation from the platform. Is that the board needs to create, we talked, we've talked before about how the board. Must create a detailed position to present to legislators, including the intended use of these funds. Um, this need for a discussion requires a deep dive to reach consensus. Um, either via staff, um, providing a recording. Or via detailed recommendation from the Legislative Committee based on their due diligence. Um, at this point, I would just pose a, you know. Open-ended question for fellow board members to consider. Um, do other board members believe they understand our options in terms of. Um, using the proceeds from the sale of our properties? Um, and what that means in terms of this exemption? Um, do fellow board members outside of the Legislative Committee collectively and individually. Understand the pros and cons of these options? And why a decision to specify, quote, staff and programming, end quote, is our best option? Um, so to get. So to get to the motion to amend, I move to amend item number four, the legislative exemption, to read, quote, "District 191 is planning to sell one or more properties and is seeking a legislative exemption that would allow proceeds of the sale to be transferred to the district's general fund." End quote. And then delete, quote, "ensuring those funds are used to directly impact student learning through programming and staffing," end quote. We all know that this board has agreed to have proceeds go to the general fund. As a full board, however, we have not yet discussed or decided how we wish to use the proceeds. Now, I'm not suggesting that upon collective review, we may not, we may decide that this current verbiage best captures the preferred option. I am simply suggesting that we owe ourselves and our community further vetting to reach an informed decision by this body as a whole. To provide further context of our work, per existing policy, Policy 213, School Board Committees, the general statement of policy is, looking at Section 2, Item D, "The committee or subcommittee is advisory in nature and has only authority as specified by the school board." He goes on, "And to continue, the school board will receive reports or recommendations from a committee or subcommittee for consideration. The school board, however, retains the right and has the duty to make all final decisions related to such reports or recommendations. And while one might argue that this represents this, the platform that's being proposed tonight represents the committee's recommendation, the main recommendation is really regarding the Legislative Platform, while the proposed use of proceeds is indirect or implied. As a district, it is our responsibility to be transparent with our community. Nothing could be more transparent than a workshop to reach consensus on the terms of the legislative exemption. This information would be received, as I mentioned before, either as a staff report or as an in-depth recommendation by the Legislative Committee. Should there be a second to my motion to amend, this board would have the opportunity to discuss whether the full membership Legislative Committee and non enjoy the same level of knowledge and understanding of our options for using proceeds. For example, here we have the suggestion to use it for staff and programming. There are other options to commit and use immediately to update our existing buildings. Also, to commit for future use and add on to a middle school when enrollment reaches sufficient levels. There may be others. If there is a second to this motion, we would also have the opportunity to determine the means by which we would receive information on the legislative exemption. Again, workshop with staff reports or workshop hosted by the Legislative Committee with the committee providing recommendations and evidence to support that recommendation. In the end, my goal here is simply to make sure that this board moves forward together with knowledge, with transparency among ourselves and within our community. As it stands now, based on the timeline above, I worry that only the Legislative Committee members might be able to explain this decision to our community, based of course on their due diligence and the homework that I know they have completed as described by Director Chester. As fellow board members, we all need to be able to support and communicate the value and benefits of this platform in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you Director Alt. Director Alt has presented a motion for amendment of the the recommendation in front of us. I would ask if there is a second for Director Alt's motion?
A second.
Sorry, was that Director Verb?
Yes.
Seconded by Director Verb. Apologize, somebody helped me out. Do we need to have a roll vote on that then, on the actual amendment? Okay.
Yes.
So then this, well, first of all, I would open it up for a discussion on the amendment to the recommendation of Legislative Platform. So to be clear, we're simply at this point discussing the amendment. And that is to strike the last, after the comma in the sentence. Director Connor.
Are you only talking about the number four portion of the, just number four?
At this point, we are simply discussing whether we would amend what is ultimately going to be voted on to strike that last part, beginning with ensuring those funds.
Thank you.
Yep, certainly. Any further conversation? I will just speak to it a moment. I think I'm fine with this amendment. I think it is healthy to, in general practice, to put things out that are that don't limit us in our, in our abilities. So I, you know, in general, I think I agree with Director Alt's careful consideration of the matter. Any further commentary? Hearing none at this point, I would ask Ms. Kenny to bring forth the roll. This will simply be for the amendment to the proposed recommendation in front of us. Ms. Kenny.
Hugh.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Saad.
Hi.
Verb.
Hi.
Alt.
Hi.
Chester.
Hi.
Connor.
Hi.
The proposed amendment passes unanimously. We're back to general conversation about Legislative Platform now in its amended form. Any further?
Roll call?
No, we're just commentary at this point. Any further commentary or questions about the, thank you Ms. Kenny. Any further commentary or questions on the recommendation for the Legislative Platform? I would just, I would like to say echoing Ms. Alt's earlier comments, I am impressed by the look and feel, the time that I know that went into that. Thank you very much. I'd also like to just point out that the purpose of the Legislative Committee is, has multiple purposes. This is one of them. And so I appreciate the time and energy getting this taken care of and out the door. This is of course, four items. It's a, the intent is to provide speaking points, elevator pitches, if you would, in the classic terminology. In no way is this of course representative of the entirety of our interests or focus of this district. And certainly doesn't mean that we're limiting ourselves to this, nor we're limiting to ourselves, nor are we excluding anything that might pop up a month or two from now that we're not aware of currently. So just to be clear for everybody, this simply gives us some direction and focus on the key things that are in front of us. It's purposely limited to three or four items in its design in that interest, so. All right, having discussed it, at this point, I will take the roll call to, we will be voting on the recommendation to accept the Legislative Platform as amended by the previous agreed-upon amendment. Ms. Kenny, will you call the roll, please?
Miller.
Hi.
Saad.
Hi.
Verb.
Hi.
Alt.
Hi.
Chester.
Hi.
Connor.
Hi.
Hugh.
Hi.
Recommendation in front of us passes unanimously. Thank you. Nothing like stretching my Robert Schur's legs a little bit. Thank you. All right. The next item we have is to elect, elect, next recommendation in front of us is to elect to extend the student transportation contract with Schmitty and Sons, our busing company. Making presentation, presenting the recommendation tonight, Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services, Lisa.
Thank you Chair Miller. As we take a look at our transportation contracts for next year, we have the opportunity to extend our existing transportation contracts. And I'd like to take a moment just to kind of give a little bit of history on where, how long we've been with Schmitty and Sons and et cetera. So it was March of 2018 when the board awarded the transportation contract for the fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20 school years to Schmitty and Sons buses in Burnsville LLC. And at that time, the contract was written such that there was two additional years as options. So as part of the contract, it requires that we at least notify, we had notify at least 90 days prior to the end of the school year the purpose of our renewal or non-renewal for the coming year. And we have that option then for that third and that fourth year. We would be moving into our fourth year. We are currently in our third year. And we've been very pleased with the service that has been provided by Schmitty and Sons. So according to the contract, it also identifies already the amount that the rates would increase should we exercise the option and elect to extend the student transportation contract for that fourth year. So based on the Consumer Price Index and the fact that that is calculating higher for the Minneapolis area at the end of the year, the fact is that we would be working with a 1.3% increase, which is the lower amount that is in the contract as written originally. So this recommendation is that the Board of Education approves the election to extend the student transportation contract with Schmitty and Sons and authorizes the notification of renewal with a rate increase of 1.3% for the 2020, 2020, I'm sorry, 2021, 2022 school year. With this, we would, we would next provide a letter of notification to Schmitty and Sons of our intent to renew, should this be approved by the board.
May I have a motion, please, for the recommendation in front of us?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester and may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Connor. I will open it up for discussion and comments on the recommendation in front of us. Director Alt.
I just want to echo Lisa's comments that, you know, we've had really positive feedback on Schmitty and Sons and in contrast to, you know, experiences with the previous provider. And they've really been partners and here in our community, so appreciate having them.
Thank you. Would any other board members wish to comment or ask questions? Very well, seeing none, Ms. Kenny, I would ask you to please call the roll.
Saad.
Hi.
Verb.
Hi.
Alt.
Hi.
Chester.
Hi.
Connor.
Hi.
Hugh.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi. And with that, the recommendation in front of us passes unanimously. Now move to next item on our agenda, Award Contract for Classroom Audio System Purchase. Again, Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services.
Thank you Chair Miller. Actually, I'm going to ask also that Director of Technology, Rachel Gordon, have an opportunity to just describe for you a little bit more of the details around this. So I'll just pause and, and should there be any need, I'll come back. But Rachel, why don't you go ahead and describe this?
Good evening Chair Miller, Board of Directors and Superintendent Battle. Tonight I'm here with the recommendation to award a contract for classroom technology audio system installment purchase from Lightspeed. And just some background on this, last spring, we were ready to start moving forward with some of our upgrades to our classroom technology. And these, these upgrades are part of the technology levy funds. We were ready to start moving. In fact, some of our last slide decks and information was in February of last year. And then we know what happened in March. And so like many of the things that Lisa was describing earlier, there were some things that were put on hold as we reacted and responded to the COVID pandemic. And the classroom technology upgrades were one of those items. So we are revisiting those now. We're coming back to those this spring. And the one tonight is for installed audio systems. We currently have a similar models that we are asking for your approval tonight in some of our classrooms and some of our buildings, but is very scattered across. So we have a couple of our elementary schools and our new high school additions that were part of Vision 191. We did put in audio systems, installed audio systems. And now we're looking to go back and ensure that all of our classrooms have this technology. This is research-based. It's excellent. We definitely, right now, when we're wearing masks and shields, we're really cognizant of the inability to hear clearly and how important it is that our students and our, and our staff are able to hear without straining and speak without straining for the, for the time that they're in the classroom. So we are choosing to go with Lightspeed. Lightspeed is the vendor that we have standardized on. It does work with our assistive technology systems across in our buildings. And in order to maintain kind of that, that ability to work with warranties and quick responses for issues that come in, we'd like to stay with the Lightspeed model and brand. Our installation for the project will be through a third party that we have been, have used before and have had very good, successful relationship with and would like to stay with, with that company. And funding for the purchase is going to be using FY20 technology levy carryover. So again, that was earmarked for last spring for these purposes. And now we'll be using that as we move forward. And then the remainder is going to be out of the FY21, this current technology levy year are unspent that we have available to us. I did note in the recommendation that we did put in the option for GEAR or Essar. And that really is to just address the fact that at this point, we have not seen our GEAR 2 or our Essar 2 allocations. And so to provide the most flexibility to maximize our resources as we move forward. The Lightspeed audio systems will be put into elementary, middle school and high school. At this point, we will not be addressing BOSS, but we will be looking at that in the next phase for future options. We also will be opening up some portable systems that we have available to be able to move around to other systems. They're currently in building, in rooms. And they will be getting installed systems. And so we'll have those available for some of our, our rooms as well. So with that, it is recommended that the contract be approved with Lightspeed for a total of 397,744.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the recommendation put forward before us?
So moved.
And may I have a second? Moved by Director Alt. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Verb. Any conversation or questions on the recommendation in front of us? Director Alt.
Just one Rachel. Can you help us understand how BOSS was not included in this round of updates?
Yeah, so the main reason for BOSS not being included in this round is for if, if there's potential movement for programming, we don't want to put anything into classrooms that is permanent, that can't be moved. But we will have, we will be freeing up our portable systems so that we can put in some good systems into those classrooms that have more portability.
Fair point. Thank you.
Any further questions? Very well, seeing none, Ms. Kenny, will you please call the roll?
Verb.
Hi.
Alt.
Hi.
Chester.
Hi.
Connor.
Hi.
Hugh.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Saad.
Hi.
Very well, the recommendation toward contract for classroom audio system purchase passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Excellent. Excellent. Uh, and now we will come to the final item of this evening's new business section with an approve, a recommendation to approve broker recommendation. Um, and this with her uh, hat-trick tonight, Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services. Lisa, you're up again.
Thank you, Chair Miller. Um, so we have had many conversations around facilities, and those conversations have led us to a request for proposals for broker services that was conducted with the assistance of Ellers. Um, staff at Ellers, along with ourselves, worked to uh, prepare the RFP, send that RFP out. There was on January thirteenth, that was sent out to ten different brokerage firms. Uh, seven responded. Of those seven, six of them met the requirements of our RFP and uh, were determined to be eligible for, for interviews, should we choose. So um, on February second and third, there was a team of us that met with um, met with each of those six and um, conducted conversations with them. It was a con, um, inclusive of Eller's staff, Chair Miller, Vice Chair Chester, and uh, Dr. Battle and other staff here, um, myself and, and Dave Lake. So with those um, in attendance for those interviews, then based on those interviews, three of the firms were identified as being a good fit for us. They had similar listings in the area and with their fee information. Uh, Transwestern is, is um, one of the three finalists with the lowest amount of um, brokerage fee at four percent for gross sales price, but should there be a co-broker, then that amount would be seven percent. Um, the contract that you have included in your packet is a one-year agreement that may be canceled by either party within thirty days' written notice. Um, the assigned, the um, Transwestern has assigned four other members to be on our listing team. They are responsible, according to the agreement, to pay for all advertisement for, for the sale of the property and provide bi-weekly updates as well as monthly reports on the interest, leads and status of those. They would advise the district on proposed purchase terms, should those come forward and, and coordination of the buyer's due diligence and investigation of that property until the transaction is complete. Um, this is really around the, the one property of River Ridge. Any future property be sold by the district, we may choose to utilize this particular company at their discretion if they are pleased. Um, if, at our discretion, excuse me, if we're pleased with um, the services that are performed. So with that, the recommendation before you is that the Board of Education approves Transwestern as a broker for the listing of the River Ridge Education Center.
I would ask for a motion on the recommendation in front of us.
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume, and a second on the motion in front of us?
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. I'll open it up for questions and discussion. Any questions or uh, comments on the selection of the broker? Well, seeing none, I'll just, I do want to make a couple of comments, and Director Chester, you can jump in if you wish. Uh, this was a, I know this at this point appears to be uh, you know, a last item on our agenda this evening. We're kind of flying past it, but it was an exhaustive process that went into this. We uh, uh, spent a rather hastily um, combined together a number of evenings uh, in calls, um, virtual calls with and all, all the brokerage firms that made it to the, the round um, of interviews. And frankly, um, I, you know, I, I would say my hats off to everyone that interviewed for the process, every one of them. It was, it was, they were really, it was a very close race. It was a horse race that would have gone to the photo finish. Um, and um, you know, our determinating factors uh, came down to just some of the, the way we felt, the kind of the mix and the feel, and uh, frankly, the numbers were pretty uh, closely aligned on all of them, with all of them. Uh, there was a little bit of savings here and there. Um, these kind of conversations, uh, none of us are experts in real estate, large scale realists, commercial real estate sales, but uh, we're learning as we go. But um, you know, the, you, you looking at firms that are small, medium and large, uh, you worry with the really large ones, nationally large ones, whether you're going to be getting as much attention as you would maybe with those different sized ones. We had multiple conversations around all of that. If you do have questions, I would encourage you to, you know, if they pop up later, whatever, to direct them to uh, Dr. Battle. But I, I do want to assure you that we've spent quite a lot of time and um, uh, we were very happy with the assistance we received in our guidance uh, through this process. Um, so um, so just, I'd like y'all to know that at least. So, all right. So that, with that, uh, Ms. Kenny, I'll ask you to call the roll, please.
Alt.
I.
Chester.
I.
Connor.
I.
You.
I.
Miller.
Hi.
Saif.
I.
Werb.
I.
And the recommendation to approve the broker uh, passes unanimously. Excellent. Well, that brings us to the end of our regularly scheduled board meeting this evening. Um, I'm going to call us into adjournment. Uh, we will be adjourning to a student performance and achievement committee of the whole meeting. The time is currently at eight forty-six. Um, I'm going to suggest that we take a little break here before we go to the next part of our evening. So um, let's return back here at the top of the hour at nine o'clock, if that would work for everybody. Um, you may shut off your camera, microphone, whatever, and we'll see you back here in roughly fourteen minutes. Thank you.
All right, welcome back, everybody. We're going to, as I mentioned earlier, we have adjourned to a student performance and achievement committee of the whole. And tonight, we will be discussing the achievement gap with the World's Best Workforce goal. And the presentation and speak will be made by led in by Amina Offidell. Amina, I will turn it over to you to begin.
Thank you very much, Chair Miller, Superintendent Battle, and members of the board. Just want to say thank you for this opportunity this evening. Joining me tonight are members of the CISA team, Anna Roselli, who is our Coordinator of Data and Research, Bethany Van Osgood, Elementary Curriculum Coordinator, and Franny Becker, Secondary Curriculum Coordinator. The purpose let's see. I thought Erin had the presentation up, but I will. Okay. So the purpose of this evening's report is to share the district data as it relates to Minnesota's state World's Best Workforce Goal to close all racial and economic achievement gaps. First, we're going to give you an overview of the assessment landscape in the midst of the COVID pandemic. Next, we will share results of our local assessments, recognizing the limited data points that we have available. And finally, we want to give you a picture of the strategies that educators are using to support our learners and reduce our performance gaps. So to start us out, will be Anna Roselli, so who will take over the presentation. Thank you, Anna.
Thank you, and thank you, board members, for this opportunity to talk to you. I'm here to lay the landscape of assessment in the time of COVID, as I like to call it. Understanding where we were in the spring and realizing that we were likely going to have a very different school year in the fall, I had the opportunity to sort of lay the landscape of where our values were regarding assessment and sort of the action plan for that. And so in thinking about assessment during COVID is very similar in terms of thinking about instruction. There's a lot of pressures and different trajectories that that basically outline what assessment can do and how assessment is used. I have this graphic so that you can see a lot of the factors just in the process of assessing students. So remote testing was a brand new modality, literally had never been done before in this manner. We did assessments that included face-to-face, which required a video conference. And then we also did assessments with the teacher either present by video or was assigned in a separate session or in like a homework situation where students would take the test at home. And that was something that was new learning for teachers as well as for students. There was a lot of volatility, volatility of life for the students where existing barriers were exacerbated, not just in instruction, but also in assessment. And then the volatility of even school where the transitions among learning models, moving from one teacher to another when we had to change those learning models, and even adjusting to different types of classroom protocols, all had pressure on school and assessments. We had a new dependency on technology, internet service that literally made or would make or break school and assessments as well, since we very much leaned on these computer systems and the way that those assessments were produced in those systems so that we could use them. So I think it's important to understand that the learning trajectories are now different. We are in a new reality, and there's really no going back. I use the phrase back to normal, but we're really going to be headed into a recovery period as we start to have school be similar to what we had before. But there's going to be a lot of changes, some of them positive. I think we started to recognize a lot of where those barriers are and are trying to come up with new creative ways for that. But the assessments themselves are going to demonstrate some of those things, and there's going to be some information that we can know and honestly, some information we aren't going to know through assessment. The next slide, please. When I talked with principals and leaders and teachers about assessment in the time of COVID, I used these three guiding points on how we wanted to use assessment. Now that I'm looking at it in retrospect, I would have made some adjustments to that if, Amina, you can do the next. Yes. Always at the forefront, and if I could make the font of that first bullet point 10 times larger, I would. Assessment, assessment particularly during this time was to provide teachers with information to adjust their teaching and address specific learning needs. If an assessment was not going to provide that, it likely was not going to be important enough to do it at this time. I thought that assessment could be also important to determine progress of students. Because we were doing school models we had literally never done before, could we recognize whether or not we needed to make adjustments in those models? I wonder now if we can determine that due to many factors. There are so many other aspects that affect learning and assessment during this time, including a lot of those things I mentioned before, volatility, technology, and very likely it's going to be in the next couple of years that we'll really start to see what school models worked well and what maybe needed improvement. But at least we have some data to be able to see that. And then the last is to provide district planning for progress, not necessarily to look back and say, what did we do wrong? But for the planning of the future, the assessments right now are allowing us to adjust teaching, not just for the present moment for teachers, but also how we're going to adjust planning for the future. Which students did not benefit from our models? Which students did not receive the instruction that they needed to? And what do we need to provide as we return to normal? Whereas now I like to think about it into our recovery from COVID. Next slide, please. This is a statement, and I won't read it to you, but this is a statement that I thought was really important when I thought about how assessments should be administered. If we're going to look at it through a lens of equity, it's always about thinking about what is something that is accessible, reliable, and equitable. And what that means is that we are measuring meaningful learning that is going to be, again, useful to teachers to be able to adjust instruction, that the environments of testing are going to be the best that we can provide at that time, and that the interpretation of testing is enabling teachers to adjust instruction. And very, most importantly, that we treat assessment scores very gently, and we triangulate that with other information that we know. So given that while many other districts chose not to do assessments, I felt that it was important, and luckily, everyone else agreed with me, that we would continue local assessments during the 2021 school year regardless of the location of the student. So we were able to provide assessments in the school building and also remotely. Next slide, please. So the assessments that we supported as a district were the FAST bridge assessments. And you can see that we have early reading for early readers K1. We have fluency through K5, and we have A-reading and A-MAP, which provide comprehensive assessments. The assessments that typically are done face-to-face, we were able to do through video conferences. And the A-reading and A-MAP were done either remotely or in the class where students were doing the comprehension tests, which are roughly 30 to 45 minutes using their Chromebook. The ACT Aspire is something that we implemented last year, and it is content-based assessments that are also about 45 minutes in length in math, reading, English, and science. And we did those fully remotely. The information is really particularly helpful, and Franny will talk about that because it gives teachers not only the assessment scores, but also the questions for teachers to look at. We implemented that in December after the transition, and we plan to give it again this spring. The state mandated tests are clearly still mandated, and so we are implementing XS 2.0. We will be implementing the MCA, and we will be doing the ACT. It was very clear to us that for an equitable opportunity for students is that all parents have a voice in whether or not their students take these assessments. And our staff have done an amazing job making contact and having one-on-one conversations with families so that they could make the best decision for themselves around state mandated tests. I think it's important, as Bethany and Franny and Amina talk to you about the scores and the instruction around that, to understand that FAST testing is done in a benchmarks that pace progression. So the goals or the benchmarks of those assessments will change from fall to winter to spring. So the ACT Aspire has an end of your benchmark. So despite the fact that we are doing two interim assessments, that goal will remain the same. So if a student is is on track for an assessment at the beginning of the year for grades nine and 10, it means that if they took that summative assessment the next day, they would still be on track. The FAST is going to change the benchmark so that that improvement is demonstrated. And so students may be making that progress, but it may be at a slower or at a different pace than the assessments will be able to provide us.
Trying to unmute. Thank you, Anna, and I just want to tell you how much I appreciate just that overview of how we're viewing assessment. And and as we take a look at the World's Best Workforce and the goals that we have there, that context is important. The World's Best Workforce is a statewide initiative providing schools with the framework for opening opportunities for all learners. The elimination of performance gaps that are present among racial and socioeconomic groups is one of the five goals. Past practice has been to use our Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, our MCAs, to set these goals and based on the prior year's results and data trends. With the school closures last year, the MCAs were not administered, so we do not have a recent data point from which to measure our progress for this year. The guidance from the Department of Education was to carry forward our goals from the prior year to this year. These are the specific targets from that goal. We started with the reduction of the gap between white students and students of color on the Spring MCA Comprehensive Assessments. Our current gap for the 2018-19 year for the performance on those was 27.3%. And we were shooting to, we were hoping to reduce that by 18 to 18.5%. That's the difference between our students of colors' performance and our white students' performance. The other goal was the economic gap, which is to reduce that gap for students who are eligible for free and reduced meals with students not eligible. Again, on the Spring Reading MCA, from 31%, that's a significant gap to 22% or 23%. So I have this little graphic here in the corner of our students bridging the gap. And just as a point of reference, to know that our current gap on the MCAs is 27% for our children of color and for our free and reduced program eligible students, it is 31%. So as we take a look at the gaps that we're, that I'll show you today, kind of keep those two figures in mind because that's our starting point. So those are our specific targets. So I'm going to take you through the different local assessments that Anna shared with us and look at the gap in and disparities in performance between students. So the first understanding is that these graphs represent the performance gap. That is, the difference in percentage between the student groups and their peers. As you look at the graphs, note that, like in the game of golf, the lower the score, the more positive the result is. This is a comparison of fall and winter of last year to fall and winter of this year. Those are the only data points we have because, as Anna said, we did suspend testing during the school closures. So with our youngest learners, and we talked a little bit about this in previous SPA, letter naming is fall only, and it does demonstrate some of the impacts on student groups for the pandemic closures during the school year, prior school year in the summer have had on incoming kindergarteners experiences with letters and language. There continues to be a significant economic disparity for, and a disparity for our early English learners. The same patterns show in the early reading skills results. And the reduction for our children of color really represents both students of color and white students performing below expectations for this fall and this winter. Next is a look at elementary reading. Reading comprehension, which is the first graph, shows very little change from our pandemic disparities. And the gap in performance with some of the largest disparities, however, continues with our English learners. And so part of what you're seeing here is that there are some groups that continue to struggle pre-pandemic and post-pandemic, even with the changes in delivery models. In elementary math, we see a continued significant struggle for all students across the board. And you can see that those are, you know, 27, 30%, 25%. So they're really in that 25 to 30% range that on, as they were in our MCAs. And our students continue to struggle here. But you can see the impact with our English learners especially. Now, I've shown you some numbers. Here's our middle school numbers. Our middle school numbers, however, they participate in the FAST bridge in reading and math, but we've seen little impact on the, of the pandemic on their scores. So the significant gaps that we saw last year still exist. But when we look at the performance of our students, we don't see any significant changes from last fall to this fall or last winter to this winter. The numbers still stay pretty solid. So you've seen the numbers, and I'd like to highlight just some contributing factors. While teachers worked harder than ever before to adapt their curriculum to the various learning models, the elementary literacy curriculum was not designed for virtual delivery. It has multiple components and asks students to work independently as well as in small groups and in pairs and one-on-one with the teacher. During full-distance learning, the time for instruction and the access to some of these modules of the curriculum were not able to be maintained at the level needed for true fidelity of implementation. The distance learning model constrained our teachers in very unanticipated ways. The multiple transitions in the learning models resulted in significant interruptions in instruction. And research has been very clear that multiple transitions, especially those of greater magnitude, such as the ones experienced by our students during the pandemic, the ones experienced by our students during the pandemic, creates a lag in progress. With this latest move back to in-person learning, the students will experience the consistency and stability that will hopefully, through all of the work of the the staff, allow them to rebound and recover their academic progress. But it is about the stability and the consistency. I also want to note that students are being asked to perform under highly unusual and disruptive circumstances, including the pandemic, but also racial unrest and protest, food and housing insecurity, and significant social isolation. The differences between this winter versus last winter are incredible. That our student numbers remain steady in many cases means that our students are working to maintain their level of performance. And so rather than seeing growing gaps, we are seeing students performing in amazing ways under difficult circumstances. With that said, I'd like to just turn this over to Bethany Van Osgood so that she can tell the story a little bit more of what our staff, our teachers are doing to help students recover from their disrupted learning environments. Bethany?
Thanks, Amina. Well, good evening. As Amina said, I'm Bethany Van Osgood and I've been coordinating elementary curriculum and instruction for the past seven years. And when Amina came and we started talking about what's happened over the last year and looking at numbers and she said, you know, we really want to know the story around this. And I mean, that's so right. We have been, we've been turned upside down. Our whole world stopped last March in education and our elementary teachers were faced with the news overnight, right, that they weren't going to get a chance to meet back with those kids that they've come to love and hold so dear. It was emotional for both teachers and students, as you all, we've all experienced, right? But within that, there is a shining light of our values. And what I've been able to really reflect on this and planning this is how two years ago, we spent time as a district identifying our instructional values. And that's what you're seeing on this slide. And there's five instructional values that we decided that in in a time of transition for our district, this was going to be who we decided that we were. We were going to be standards aligned. We were going to be engaging for each student. We were going to be relationship-based, guided by data, and student-centered, all around equity and access at the at the heart of it. And as I reflected on the past year, I see so many examples of this being the glue that held our teachers and students, specifically I'll speak to elementary, but I know Franny will speak to secondary as well. So I just want to use this as a theme to highlight just a couple of the many amazing things our teachers and students have done in this last year and have made so much progress, right? So Amina, you can go ahead and go forward. Go ahead. So the first I'm going to just highlight is standards-aligned instruction. And this is just critical, as Amina said, this is this is why we do what we do, right? We are committing for kids to learn certain guaranteed items as they're coming out of our classrooms, right? We did this in so many ways, but Amina's right. Our elementary curriculum is not designed for keeping people apart. This was hard and hardest I would offer on some of our youngest learners. Kindergarten classrooms are not supposed to be kept apart. They're not supposed to be distanced, right? And yet what our teachers did was they came together. And the theme I think you're going to hear tonight is our teachers never asked if we continue to hold true to this value. They only asked how and then they made it work. So when we found out we were going to be teaching our standards from afar, they came together and they identified what components that we could deliver best in synchronous sessions or asynchronous sessions and how we might continue to engage around our core programs. So we continued to use that literacy program that Amina said, and she's right, it's not designed for distance, but they made it work. It wasn't an if, it was a how. Same to be said for our progress around math, our math curriculum adoption. So we have been continuing to make our way towards review and a recommendation of a new math program, even despite the pandemic, doing all that work online. So that commitment to standards and core programs has been stronger than ever, I would say. The second is the student-centered and guided by data. And so what I want to share is pre-COVID, we had established some really strong values and practices around student-centered and guided by data that those values. One of the things that we implemented was a win time. You might have heard of that. It's what I need time and it's a thirty-minute block of time when typically in a non-pandemic world, we would be able to identify, use data to identify what students' needs are and then regroup them into like groups so that we could provide targeted instruction. We use our data that Anna explained, our FAST data, to do that. And so what I, what I want to celebrate is our village coming together and really leaning into, again, not if, but how. They administered the assessments virtually. That was not a small, not a small task by any stretch. Picturing doing letter sounds and letter cards and showing pictures and getting kids to point and but that was a commitment because they valued the information that they would get. And so then from there, even virtually, right, they're taking that information even now and they're digging in. And they are figuring out how to administer targeted instruction or win time. And what I've put in here is just a graphic of some of the ways that they're, they flipped this virtually. So each one of these is a teacher and an online class for her win time or his or her win time. And the kids would just click into their teacher that they knew that they were going to be meeting with. And then that would be the teacher that would administer that targeted instruction for them. So if it might be fluency from one of the teachers, they knew that when they clicked into that during that win time, they would still be getting that. So again, another celebration around, you know, not, not can we do this or should we do this? But how do we make this work for our kids? Because we know this is a value and this is who we are in one nine one. And this component especially is where we see our value and that heart of that equity and access coming to true to life. Because we're looking at what our kids need based on data and we're doing all that we can to give them that targeted personalized instruction. Go ahead, Amina. Another value is to be engaging for each student. And boy, how do you guys, that's not easy online sometimes, right? Our kids learned really quickly how to keep their cameras on and mute those mics. But what we, what we learned is that that differentiation and choice still is an important piece for our students. And actually, technology provides us a lot of many opportunities for differentiation and choice, not only for our students. But here's an example of how we also did that for our teachers. All right, so our professional development, we were able to have professional development on Wednesdays during distance learning and we provided choice and voice for them. So our amazing CISA team, our digital learning specialist, Katie Samola. Each one of these tiles is an online course, a live video, something that they can choose to learn more about on their own time. And so this is an example of what we were doing for the adults in our system. But this is also really similar to what many teachers were doing for their students in order to keep them engaged and still have that choice for for their learning. Go ahead, Amina. And finally, relationship-based. If it's nothing else, we know relationships are key to learner, for our kids to be learners, right? We need to, we need to make those connections. And it was nothing short of impressive how our teachers leaned and learned technology. Just pieces that they could use to get their kids to engage with one another. This particular picture that I've put in there for you to give you that example is a buddy breakout. So in a kindergarten classroom, this is, you know, five and six-year-olds who are getting into breakout rooms so that they can just talk to one another. And you can see how this teacher has some examples or some, I guess, tips, right, for success of to how to keep your camera on and look with your eyes and all of those skills. And yet, when we think about what our five and six-year-olds have learned how to do during this last year, it is nothing short of outstanding. And so while we are looking at reading and math data that's taken a dip and it's been hardest for our youngest, right? That's just the truth. We have some work to do. But we can't not celebrate this amazing growth that we've had. So go ahead, Amina. There was a meme that came across my social media that I felt fit so perfectly. So I'm tired of hearing people say kids are falling so far behind. Behind what exactly? We have third graders logging into Zoom meetings, troubleshooting technology glitches, learning to communicate their needs and adapting to a completely foreign school environment. With these life skills, I think they just might be pulling way ahead. Go ahead, Amina. And then from a couple of our own fourth graders, I had an opportunity to visit with them while they were having a virtual class party and I was able to pull them into a breakout room and just interview them a little bit about how they've changed. What can they do now that they couldn't do before? And it was a wonderful conversation. I just pulled out a couple of quotes from them. But Isadora said before distance learning, I wasn't as sure about using technology. Now I can split screens, move tabs and add links into Google Docs. And Ilya Sein said in distance learning, I like to play Kahoot, which is an online game, again, engagement, right? I couldn't do that before. I can also meet friends in breakout rooms and talk in small groups. And I just thought those were kind of neat examples of how much growth has occurred in really meaningful ways and how those key pieces and that value is really just, again, been the glue that's held us together. And I can't, I can't be done with my part and I'm sorry if I'm going a little long, Amina, but I can't celebrate our teachers and students enough. They have done what many would say was impossible and they have done it with passion and persistence that I just it's, it's just such a pleasure to work with our teachers. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bethany. You know, Bethany has just been working so closely with teachers, both in the virtual academy and in person, really, you know, testing to see what is it that teachers need in order to be effective at their jobs and has provided an amazing amount of leadership. And so I just want to say thank you, Bethany. Appreciate all your work. And now I'd like to invite somebody else who is providing a huge amount of leadership and guidance for teachers in the secondary in both our middle schools and high schools, Franny Bicker. So, Franny?
Thank you, Amina, and hello, members of the board. If my internet starts to go out, please let me know. So I'll turn my video off. That seems to fix it. Just a reminder, we're going to talk about the data that we're using in high school and then tell the story of what we're doing in middle school and high school. So as we shared earlier, as Amina shared earlier, one of the tests we give is the ACT Aspire Periodic Interim Test is a test that we have begun to implement with ninth and tenth grade students this year. Last year, we did it with ninth grade students. We're now doing it with ninth and tenth. It is four tests, math, science, reading and English. It can be given three times, actually up to four times a year. Our goal when we're not in COVID times is to give it three times a year to match the testing cycle that we use with the students in elementary three times a year. What the Aspire test does for us is we, if you remember back to the first slide, was the Aspire test is not an adjusting test. It gives us one goal that we have to hit and that goal stays the same all year long. And what that goal is, is it predicts how well students will perform on the Aspire summative test. And the Aspire summative test determines if a student is on track to be successful with the ACT test, which is one of the reasons why we really like to give the Aspire test. It also gives us some really great data for the teachers in the high school to use. Our next slide. Amina, I'll let you talk through the next two slides with the actual data.
Sure. So when we're looking at our first administration, which was our fall administration of the Aspire, we are looking at, you know, just the final results in each of the content areas. So in the English test, we had sixty-one percent of the students who are on track for the summative. We have, so we're feeling really good about our English. Reading forty-two, science thirty-five and math thirty-seven. Now, this is in the very beginning of the year before students have, you know, adjusted to, you know, they just now adjusted to the hybrid and we're moving into distance learning as soon as the test was completed. We also took a look at the test results by race and ethnicity. These are the scores that were returned and you can also see the four tests. You can see some consistent patterns. For example, the science test continues to be one of the lowest scores regardless of the group. The, but you can see some of the real discrepancies amongst the groups. And that's where we're looking at some gap information and trying to make sure that we're very cognizant of what students have opportunities and access to those continued opportunities.
Thank you, Amina. Just really quick to explain what those four tests are testing. The English test is testing vocabulary and grammar. Reading is testing comprehension. The math test is, and this is really important to understand about the math test. They are actually testing skills that our students haven't been introduced to yet. So there, in ninth and tenth grade, you take geometry and algebra. You're being tested on both geometry and algebra. Depending, you may not have been exposed to some of the questions that are being asked on the math test. So it's important to know that when you look at that thirty-seven percent of students are on track, that makes sense for the point in the school year that the test was given because most of the students, some of them haven't seen any of the information and half of them have seen about fifty percent of the information that they're being tested on at that point in the school year. The same is true with sciences and the introduction to physical science and the introduction to chemistry. So students are being tested on material that they may not have seen because it is considered a test of ninth and tenth grade being on track for the ACT test, which we take in eleventh grade. So what is going on in secondary? Same as in elementary where we're building the foundational building blocks of how we are supporting teachers so that teachers can support students. One of, first, as Amina shared, when we look at our data, we're seeing at secondary, we are not seeing as many of the gaps that have been produced because of the pandemic. And with that, I just want to take a moment to say thank you to Rachel Gordon and the technology team because it has been years of work that that technology team put into place that when Governor Walz came out last year and we had two weeks to pivot, our secondary team was ready to pivot. Our students were having teachers delivering instruction to them immediately staying on pace with the curriculum maps that were developed in secondary. So there was a lot that has gone into not seeing a pandemic gap with the six through eight students. So with that, one of the things we have is we have the extended Wednesday planning time across the middle school and high school. And what that is, is teams come together by content area and grade level and they plan together. They go, all right, this is, we have adjusted time with our students. What are the most important standards that we need to cover? How are we going to cover those standards? They then are also taking opportunities to meet sixth through twelfth grade. So sixth grade teachers are meeting with seventh, seventh and the eighth and they're saying, this is what we're covering. We want you to know this for the students who are coming to you next year. And then the teachers from like seventh grade are talking to the sixth grade teachers and saying, this is what we really need the students to have covered for them to be successful for the seventh grade curriculum. Because no matter what, they're not going to change the ACT. So we need to keep preparing our students to be college and career ready and we need to keep that end goal in mind. I wish we could say, oh, things have changed, the ACT has changed, we don't need to stay on that same path. We don't get that luxury. So our teachers are trying to figure out how do we make the adjustments that will still prepare our students in three years if they're, if they're an eighth grader to take the ACT and continue to be successful. And that is where we come into the data-driven instruction. And that is where we come into the data-driven instruction, where we really wanted to make sure that in secondary, that the FAST test was being given to all of our sixth through eighth grade students. And we were given the ACT Aspire to all of our ninth and 10th grade students. One thing to understand is this is something unique about our district. There are many districts that are not testing students formatively with this district-supported test, sixth through 10th grade, and then using that data to make adjustments to the instruction. We have committed ourselves to that because we know the data will help us be able to help our students be more successful if we under, if we truly understand what their needs are. And so we continue to be driven by the instruction. By the, our debt instruction continues to be driven by data. We have strong alignment to the standards. So we are constantly looking at the standards, seeing what is it that we need to teach our students? How do we, how do we teach our students this? How do we measure if the students are learning this? And just shout out to our teachers in secondary, we have two groups that in the midst of a pandemic continue to be in a curriculum review cycle. And so we have our science teachers who are, have adopted new standards, are in the middle of a curriculum review cycle. And we have our math teachers who were the first year into implementation of a new resource right in the middle of all of this happening. But they are committed to the standards and using them to instruct students. So it was never a thought that this is something that we would step away from because of the pandemic and what is happening. We continue to have the avid pedagogical framework is very much front and center at what we do. The next three go hand in hand together. Avid Equity and Relationships. So avid and equity go hand in hand together. If we look at the, I'm going to point, hopefully you're looking at the slide. If we look at the triangle is the avid triangle. When we look at the top part of the triangle, it says, this is what students need. Students need to have rigorous academic preparation, student agency and opportunity knowledge. We need to make sure every student has access to that. Below, when we look at the four below, those are the things that we say teachers need to do. Teachers need to insist on rigor from all students. That teachers need to break down barriers for students. They need to align their work and they need to advocate for students. And then when we have those things working together, we have created an equitable system for our students that is helping all of our students become college career and I've started to add life ready in for what is coming ahead. And with that, also, as in elementary, relationships has been a key with what we're doing in middle school and secondary. At the middle school level and at the secondary level this year, advisories were brought into both and a key focus of advisories is not only is college and career readiness planning, but it is social and emotional learning and a place for students to build relationships with their teachers. And at both, at both levels, they have really leaned into using advisory to help develop the relationships with the students.
Thank you, Franny. Franny has, you know, gone forward with the curriculum review and implementations with math and with science, as well as continuing to expand the work with the ELA nine and 10. Also working on our, with the high school staff on college career and life readiness and how we're doing that successfully with middle school and high school. And so there's a lot of projects going on there. And she's just provided a really, really great environment for our teachers to continue to grow. So I conclude with this particular thought is that we are in the midst of a recalibration. When we look at how our students are achieving and the work that they are, are doing, we need to remember that we are measuring them with our norm-referenced tests on students whose norm was going to school every day without a mask, without, you know, double-digit unemployment. Students who had that consistency and stability. And that, as we move forward, our testing companies are going to recalibrate those norms. And because we will be then assessing students who have been through an incredibly disruptive and traumatic year. And and knowing that there is going to be some recalibration in the pathway or the trajectory that we see students growing. We are committed to rigor. We are insistent that we continue to have high expectations for all students. And that we really want to invest in everything possible to help our students recover and rebound. But with all of the different skills that they have learned, we need to incorporate those and look at a different normal for the coming years. Different normal in what school looks like, different normal in how we deliver curriculum, different normal in how we incorporate technology. And that that, that we need to just recognize that schools across America are going to look at how can they be different? And, and we just have some really great leadership in this district with Bethany and Rachel and Franny and Anna to really just guide us into working with our, our principals on what is that, what is that rigorous new normal that supports our students and their recovery into a good trajectory of progress? That? Thank you.
So, Amina and team, thank you so much. I just wanted to add a little bit of an update on the recalibration we're getting from the US Department of Education. So they notified states this, this Monday, including Minnesota, that they are putting forward some more flexibility options for assessments and our accountability framework. So what you saw previously on the slide and what we reported, our Minnesota Department of Education is now reviewing the latest guidance from US Department of Education. And so as soon as we get that information from Minnesota Department of Education, we'll update the board. As you know, with the transition with the new administration, we have a new Secretary of Education. He and his team has spent some time and so now we're starting to get some guidance from them. So just wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Your comments or questions?
Yeah, excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you, Amina, Franny, Anna and Bethany. You have an excellent presentation. This time we'll open it up for questions, comments from the board members. It is a committee of the whole, much like a workshop environment. I'll just open it up for open commentary and respectful commentary. Thank you.
Think for me, I just have, I have a comment. I think for me, it was helpful to be reminded in several of the slides that how different the situation our students are going through right now is and our teachers. And I say this, I feel like I say this in every aspect of my life, but the old world does not exist anymore and we don't know what the new world is going to be. So I appreciate that that is, was acknowledged in the presentation and whatever the future holds, it's going to be different than what it was before for our students and how we assess them is going to have to look different as well. And maybe this is an opportunity where there've been a lot of concerns about how we assess our students for many years. Maybe this is an opportunity to really do a more effective job of that in the future. So thank you for an outstanding presentation.
Well, Scott, you pretty much said what I was going to say. So I second what Scott said.
I'm curious. Did the criteria or the way students are picked for avid? Has COVID impacted that? Has it, I mean, what are we doing differently because of COVID?
Yeah, and I think, Franny, do you want to talk a little bit? We're going to have a full avid presentation coming up in March, but I think, Franny, you want to give us a quick update as to what's being different with avid?
Yeah, that's a great question because unfortunately with COVID, we did lose students who were in avid. So we do know that we need to, we want to bring those students back in. So we want to make sure that they know that they are welcome back in. And we want to recruit new students because we know because of current COVID times that we have more students that we could service with avid. Avid National is being very flexible with how districts look at their recruitment efforts going forward. So we just started having conversations with the principals and site coordinators about what recruitment would look like for next year.
I also want to add that the emphasis has been on avid school-wide. So while we still have avid elective for some students to take as an elective course, our secondaries have been committed to avid strategies for every teacher and in every classroom.
So I guess a comment and a question. I guess the first one goes back to, you know, Franny, you were describing the conversations that are happening between the eighth grade teams and the seventh grade teams and communicating about what, you know, the eighth grade teams need the seventh grade teams to be teaching their students. And kind of communicating both two ways. Can you speak to how that's happening at the transitional grades? The fifth, the fifth to sixth and the eighth to ninth?
Yes, I can. So I didn't say we are doing that with eighth to ninth grade with eighth to ninth grade math. And then with, I'm working with the eighth grade ELA team and I work with the ninth grade ELA team. And I act as their liaison for the eighth and ninth grade ELA team. And then Bethany, things are a little bit different at elementary until Bethany and I have had conversations where we've talked about, okay, as we get closer to the end of the year, we need to bring together some fifth grade teachers and sixth grade teachers to have a conversation. So it happens a little bit more organically from sixth to eighth grade and ninth to 12th grade. And then it really needs Bethany and I to help facilitate that conversation when we go to those transitional years. But we are absolutely making sure that the transitional conversations are happening. And I know the sixth grade teachers ask me often, Franny, when are we going to have the conversation with the fifth grade teachers? And I remind them, remember, they just brought all their students back in person. And they go, oh, that's right. It's like, we all need to like calm down, you know, it, it will happen, the conversation will happen.
One way that we do this too is in our curriculum review process. So in our, on our math steering, that's working towards reviewing and adopting curriculum throughout that entire process of reviewing standards. Like Franny and I did writing together where we had K-12 in the room together while they were identifying that those expectations and grade level guarantees and things that we were going to have from grade to grade. But now on math steering, we actually have a preschool teacher. So she provides that lens from preschool to kindergarten, so that transitional year. And then also, Andy Gurkey was one of our coordinators who sat on as the transitional lens from fifth to sixth. So he was really helpful in that. So I feel like in the process of identifying curriculum, that's pretty tight, I think, within that to have all of those players at the table. Beyond that, Franny and I need to get just discussions together, but yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you. And then the last comment was just something that kind of came to mind as you were finishing your presentation, talking about and others have alluded to it, how, you know, the the new normal, you know, that, that, you know, the, the world is, is our educational world is, is being reformatted, restructured. I imagine that, you know, and, and maybe this is just hopefulness on my part. Schedules would also come into that in terms of, you know, how we schedule, how classes are scheduled, how students are scheduled. Because we've realized a lot of flexibility during the pandemic, as you've described. And I would think that in some way that flexibility could also in the future.
And I know that the schedules are things that both the middle school and high school, you know, continue to evaluate, especially when they look at things that they've learned this year about how they can be more flexible or how they can be more targeted.
I, should I go ahead and speak, Director Miller? Okay, I just had a question about, has there ever been any data for the sixth and seventh grade avid students as opposed to the ninth, 10th and 11th grade avid students? Has there been any success? You know, the success between those grade levels for this program? For the avid program?
Well, it depends on what you want to measure success as, you know, in a lot of different ways.
I guess participation and just how they score as far as their work and, and what they, the input of their, their input in the program.
So we do keep data on retention. And we do keep data that specific, we can slice the data into one of the special groups as well as those students who are identified as participating in avid elective. So we, it's possible for us to do that. And the coordinators and Franny can speak to this, actually do spend some time in that evaluation. Franny, you want to talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, I was going to say, we have this, we have the CCI, which is a, we have to complete it every year, which is a program review that Avid National has us complete every year. There are something like three hundred questions on it. Those questions, we are, we're collecting data and evidence about how students are performing. And we also have to look longitudinally at our data. And so I can just share with you that over the last three years, we have had some of the, take the pandemic out. We have had some of the best retention of students from, we typically were losing students. Sixth through eighth grade, we kept pretty tight retention of students and we lost students as they went through high school. Our retention has continued to increase as students are going through high school and we know that because we have to collect that data yearly and we have to report that data to Avid National. And also the number of students, our high school students who are applying to college and getting accepted to a two or four-year college has continued to increase every year that our data is showing us.
That's good to know. Thank you. Do you think it's possible though, that if we're introducing that program to sixth and seventh graders, maybe a little too soon? And then by the time they get to high school, they're not as interested because they've already taken it in secondary school? Just a thought.
Actually, what typically tends to happen in high school is students love avid. And what happens is there's a lot of elective choices and it becomes a scheduling conflict. And we're having conversations at the high school about this. This is where it, it really, sadly, it becomes a real scheduling conflict for some of our high school students. So we tend to find if we can, if they make that transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, we tend not to lose them unless it's because of a scheduling issue. So we try really hard to hold on to them from eighth to ninth grade.
Good to know. Thank you.
And anecdotally, it really comes out at the, at the graduation ceremony. At the end of the year, if we're able to, you know, have that ceremony again, the stories that the students share about family, you know, the avid class is being like family. It's just, you can tell how
It's just, you can tell how impactful it's been on our students.
And now we're all super excited for Franny's presentation on Avid at the next meeting.
I'm certain she'll bring her A-game.
Always does.
Well, I think we may be wrapping it up. If there's more we want to say, feel free. But I, I do want to acknowledge, first of all, the work that went into preparing this. Thank you, the fact that you're here at ten o'clock on a Thursday evening. Appreciate that also. I did, I mean, there's elements of this, I mean, obviously there was statistical stuff we needed to review and such, but there were some elements in this report that really stood out for me. And that, you know, one was, first of all, the acknowledgement, you didn't, I didn't hear COVID being used as a crush, but you, it was an explanation of the environment and I appreciated that a lot. I also really heard a theme of flexibility, which was amazing to me. I mean, any organization that has to understand that change is inevitable and has to be able to navigate change. And I, and what I heard coming through this whole thing was, not only did we pivot and change, we're pivoting and changing as we go on and we're ready for more change as it happens. And the acknowledgement that, you know, I really like hearing the, you know, this, the fact that, you know, unfortunately, you know, COVID has done a lot of damage to a lot of people and I'm empathetic to that. A lot of people just want to go back to what it was. And that's the acknowledgement that that's not ever going to happen. That what it was is not, we're not going there. We're going to somewhere in between or some new is in the future. I really appreciated that coming through this storyline. The slide for me, the meme on the, the adaptation of children was significant. I've tried to explain this to so many people that I understand the losses we've had. But, you know, when we have losses, we can't, sometimes, certainly we can't control them. We can mitigate them as much as we can. But it's important to remember that everything brings something different. And I see that also, saw that the first day, my kindergarten, second or third day, my kindergarten came home and told me about how many, how he's going to be doing these Zoom calls and had all this, he had more things in his day than scheduled that I did. So I was very impressed. So it's a new reality and I'm glad that we as a district, I'm proud that we as a district are clamming onto that and adjusting to that and celebrating that. We'll keep an eye on the people that need help in between and we're going to prop everybody up, obviously. But I'm really proud of what we're doing. Thank you. Any last words from anybody else? Not, thank you, everyone. That's, we're going to now adjourn this meeting of Committee of the Whole, the SPA, and wish everybody a wonderful evening and.